All right. Thank you, everybody, for your patience. We are going to go ahead and call this special meeting of the Calaveras County Planning Commission to order at 9:28, six-ish, and get started with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Are there any staff announcements or agenda changes we should know about? Oh goodness, we have none. Thank you. Then we will go ahead and open the general public comment period if anyone has registered to comment. I believe they're here for specific products. Okay. Then we will go ahead and move on from that and get started with the consent agenda, which consists only of the approval of minutes from our October 28 meeting. Is there any member of the public or member of the commission who would like to remove that item for further discussion?
No, but I do have a suggestion for a change.
Sure, let's hear it.
Okay, under Planning Director Reports, says Gina Cath, an interim planning director, request that commissioners submit their edits regarding the GHV inventory and so forth. I don't remember it being edits. I think it was submitted in areas of questioning so that the persons knowledgeable on the subjects from the consultants could attend.
My understanding is that it was both.
Yeah, I recall it being both. So if anything, perhaps we need to add the latter.
Can we just say submit their edits and areas of questioning?
Yes. Could we say propose edits just to make sure it's clear that we're on our document? Yes, thank you.
Okay, that was it.
Does anybody else have any comments or suggestions, corrections?
I'd like to move that we accept the meeting minutes of October 28.
Shall we move for a second?
Call in favor.
Aye.
Passes 5-0 with all of us present. And we will begin with our regular agenda, item 1, 2020-017 Tentative Parcel Map for Jay Woods and Madeline. I believe you are going to lead that discussion.
Good morning. Let me just get my presentation shared here. Wait a minute. Share screen. Madeline Flandreau, Planner 2, this is Tentative Parcel Map 2020-017 for Jay Woods. The subject parcel, APN 048-025-292, shown here, highlighted in red, is located at 5567 Amos Lane in Bursen. This is the county's aerial image from 2020, which shows the parcel currently developed with a single-family residence and a barn. The applicant is proposing to split a 14.31 acre parcel in two. Parcel A on the left here will be 9.31 acres in size, and Parcel B on the right will be five acres in size. Parcel A will be accessed from the existing driveway off Amos Lane, and Parcel B will take access from a driveway to be located from the dedicated 30-foot wide road and public utility easement, which currently serves the parcel immediately to the south. The purpose of the lot split is for residential construction on the proposed parcel B. The proposed land division is consistent with the current general plan and zoning code. The project site has a general plan land use designation of rural transition B and is zoned rural residential. Section 1722070 of county code outlines the site development standards for parcels in the RR zoning district, which has a minimum parcel size of five acres, which are served by individual well and onsite wastewater disposal systems. The proposed land division would allow for the future construction of one, single-family residence and accessory dwelling, as well as accessory structures and other activities associated with construction, such as grading, road, and encroachment improvements. This is the view up the existing driveway looking east. The residence is up on top of the hill but is obscured by the trees. And this is the view of proposed parcel B looking east from the existing easement road. As you can see from these photos, the subject parcel consists of lowland foothill, grassland, and sparse pine and oak trees. And there's a very small seasonal drainage in the southern portion of proposed parcel The project application was routed to local county departments and agencies, as well as state and federal agencies. Comments were received from Public Works, Environmental Management, Calaveras Consolidated Fire Protection District, and the California Department of Fish and Wildlife. Public Works found that the project did warrant the conditioning of off-road site improvements to Amos Lane to a 20-foot roadbed width, as the current condition of Amos Lane is only 14 to 18 feet at one point. The applicant will also be required to improve the road approach off of Pedinter Road and improve where Parcel B is proposed to take access to a minimum service roadway and create a hammerhead or turnaround. As the parcel does not have public water and sewer, Environmental Management has conditioned the project requiring the applicant to demonstrate that an adequate water supply can be developed on proposed parcel B. In addition, the onsite wastewater department is requiring that the applicant submit information that an adequate liquid waste disposal method can be completed. The Fire Protection District did not have any project-specific comments or concerns, but reiterated that any future construction must comply with fire and building codes, which is completed during the building permit plan review. Comments received from the California Department of Fish and Wildlife included concerns with potential impacts to California tiger salamander, as the parcel is located within designated critical habitat. So because there is designated critical habitat, a California tiger salamander critical habitat assessment was conducted by DUDAC in September of 2020. There are two documented tiger salamander occurrences, one breeding pond, which is .6 miles to the east, and another breeding pond .8 miles to the southeast, both of which are still considered to have species present. The assessment by DUDAC delineates a half-acre building envelope, which is located in the northern portion of proposed parcel B, that lacks suitable upland habitat. Based on the assessment by DUDAC, impacts to California tiger salamander or its habitat are not anticipated if ground disturbance activities are restricted to the mapped building envelope and the existing access roads, as shown on Figure 3 of the assessment by DUDAC. This is Figure 3, which shows the building envelope here in red. Hopefully, you can all see that clearly. Based on the conclusion and recommendation by DUDAC, mitigation measure BR-1 was included to reduce this potential impact to less than significant with mitigation. So Measure BR-1 is, in order to avoid impacts to California tiger salamander, all ground disturbing activities shall be restricted to the building envelope and existing access roads, as shown on Figure 3 of the California tiger salamander habitat assessment conducted by DUDAC in September 2020. Before recordation, the final tentative parcel map shall include the building envelope outlining the area restricting ground disturbing activities. The California Department of Fish and Wildlife reviewed the assessment by DUDAC and did not have any further comments. So this item was previously scheduled for the October 14 hearing and was continued because there were some concerns with regards to comments received from the California Department of Fish and Wildlife, and there were also some questions regarding the recommendation from the DUDAC assessment. I have since updated the staff report with an addendum in order to address the comments received by the Department of Fish and Wildlife on August 11, 2020, which is included in the attachment of the addendum. The comments from the Department of Fish and Wildlife included a recommendation that the SEQA document include measures to avoid disturbance to nesting birds. The discussion of potential impacts to nesting birds was inadvertently omitted from the initial study. However, the standard mitigation for avoidance of impacts to nesting birds is as follows. In order to avoid take of protected raptors and migratory birds, vegetation removal shall be scheduled between September 1 and January 31. If vegetation removal must be conducted between February 1 and August 31, a pre-construction nesting bird survey shall be conducted by a qualified biologist canvassing the site and a 250-foot buffer around, excuse me, 250-foot buffer area around the site with binoculars. The survey shall be conducted within two weeks prior to the beginning of vegetation removal in order to identify active nests within 250 feet of the reclamation area. If active nests are found within the survey area, vegetation removal shall be delayed until the qualified biologist determines nesting is complete. However, as you can see, the entire building envelope is devoid of vegetation and trees. As there is no vegetation or trees to be removed from the building envelope, this mitigation does not apply. Based on the site conditions, as long as there is compliance with mitigation measure BR-1, there would be no impacts to nesting birds, and therefore, there's no need to include additional mitigation to avoid disturbance. In addition, comments 3 and 4 from the August 11, 2020 email from the Department of Fish and Wildlife were a bit unclear. Comment 3 states that a California environmental species act take permit should be obtained if the proposed project has the potential to result in take of a state-listed planter species. Then comment 4 goes on to state that they recommend that a take permit be obtained for the project. So it was a bit unclear to staff whether or not a permit, a take permit, was required based on the results of the 2020 habitat assessment by DUDAC, and therefore, clarification was requested. So an email from Ian Ralston, environmental scientist with the Department of Fish and Wildlife, dated October 18, 2021, which is also included in the attachment to the addendum, states, quote, "I would recommend deferring to the findings of the bioassessment in order to determine if a 2081 take permit is necessary. From what I recall, DUDAC concluded that no impacts to California tiger salamander are anticipated if the project stays within the footprint of the mapped building envelope and existing access road." Planning staff forwarded the comments to Fish and Wildlife, I'm sorry, from Fish and Wildlife, to Mr. Michael Henry, who is a senior ecologist with DUDAC, in order to receive concurrence that a California environmental species act would not be required based on the findings and conclusions of the habitat assessment. In his email response from October 21, 2021, which is also included, Mr. Henry stated that with implementation of the mitigation, the risk of impact to tiger salamander is sufficiently low that he would not advise seeking a take permit from the Department of Fish and Wildlife. There was also clarification needed regarding the conclusions and recommendations of the assessment by DUDAC. So planning staff contacted DUDAC in order to fully understand the recommendation to restrict ground disturbance to the mapped building envelope when the report appeared to be concluding that there was a lack of habitat. A response was received from Mr. Henry, who stated that the project site does not include aquatic habitat with a suitable ponding duration to provide breeding habitat for California tiger salamander. He goes on to say that the site does contain some areas of potential upland habitat in locations of deeper topsoil, where potential California tiger salamander presence cannot be ruled out. The assessment describes and maps a project site that avoids this potential upland habitat, and the finding that the project would not impact the tiger salamander is based on the project not exceeding the boundaries of the project site plus the existing access roads. The mitigation measure is required to ensure that the county can condition the project to not exceed that project site boundary, thus ensuring the project has no potential to impact this federally and state-listed species. In addition, there were questions as to the lack of building restrictions on proposed parcel A, as the proposed parcel has the potential for further development with the addition of an accessory dwelling and further outbuildings. However, the parcel currently has the ability to add these structures by right without the tentative parcel map. And according to the habitat assessment, the eastern portion of parcel A, the portion containing the structures, is mapped as a rooterel or developed and found to have no habitat. You can see it outlined here, the eastern portion of parcel A. In addition, much of the western portion of parcel A is outside of the designated critical habitat. Therefore, planning staff determined that no restrictions to parcel A were necessary. So based on further information provided by Fish and Wildlife and DUDAC, staff concludes that mitigation BR-1 should remain, and that no further mitigation or conditions need to be applied to this project, and recommend the approval of the project as originally presented.
And I just wanted to clarify for the record that we use the term addendum when we have an addition to the staff report, and in this case, I think Madeline does not mean a SEQA addendum.
Yes, thank you.
It means addendum to the staff report.
So pursuant to SEQA guidelines, staff prepared an initial study and mitigated negative declaration, which was distributed for a 30-day review period between June 23 and July 23, 2021. The initial study identified potentially significant adverse effects under biological resources, the potential for the site to be used as habitat for the California tiger salamander. A mitigation measure was incorporated, which mitigated the potentially significant impacts to less than significant, and a mitigated negative declaration was prepared. One comment letter was received from Caltrans, which just included standard comments not relative to the project or the environmental document, and no other comments were received. So this project is consistent with general plan policies from the Conservation Element, COS 3.1, which is to use site planning techniques to protect biological resources, as well as policy COS 3.2, which is to avoid impacts to habitats, as well as COS 3.3, which requires new development to identify and mitigate impacts to wildlife habitat, and implementature COS-4M, which encourages the preservation and enhancement of upland habitat for wildlife species to the extent feasible on parcels containing suitable habitat in a way that promotes regional connectivity of open space habitat. So in conclusion, the proposed tentative parcel map is consistent with the county zoning code, as well as meeting the minimum requirements for the RR zone parcel, which is served by a well and onsite wastewater system, as there's no substantial evidence that the project as designed and conditioned will have a significant effect, and there's no substantial evidence that the project as designed and conditioned will have a significant effect on the environment. The project has also been adequately conditioned in order to meet the applicable requirements of the county municipal code. The project application was circulated to county departments, providing service to the project in addition to state and federal agencies with jurisdiction within the area, and there were no concerns from those agencies, and no comments were received in objection to the project from adjacent landowners. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Madeline before we give the applicant an opportunity to speak?
Going back to Figure 3, what was the size of the building envelope? I miss that.
It's half an acre.
Half acre. And then the raptor, migratory birds is not in effect on this? Is that what I understood?
Correct. As long as that mitigation measure is in place, and it's a condition of the map approval, that no vegetation removal is going to occur.
That vegetation removal, what constitutes vegetation removal? Is it grass, is it brush, shrubs, trees?
Trees and brush.
So grasses are, that are not affecting the...
Correct.
So you can continually mow and...
Yes.
Okay. All right, that's all I got. Thank you.
Where is the restriction as far as any vegetative removal? I mean, I know, what I'm concerned about is, are we assuming that any cutting down of the oak trees include ground disturbance, and therefore, would be barred? Or is there actually a restriction that the oak trees cannot be removed?
Are you talking, are you concerned about the roads that are shown on parcel B?
The, yeah, the, right, the oak trees that are shown in parcel B outside the building envelope.
There isn't a mitigation measure that says in order to avoid taking of protected raptors and migratory birds, vegetation removal shall be scheduled, blah, blah, blah. Although, we're not, we don't have any vegetation to remove.
From the building envelope. And is the building envelope, the .51 acres, is that sufficient to provide for septic system?
For a well and septic system in leach field, you're saying?
Yeah. Because I mean, on page, page 2 of the resolution, it, without citing the, the actual building envelope, it says, "Proposed parcel B is five acres in size and sufficient buildable area is available on it to accommodate residential construction and wastewater disposal." But I don't know if that has the restriction of the building envelope in mind.
Yeah, that's a really good point. Actually, when we consider parcels that are served by wells and septics, it's a minimum five-acre parcel size in order to fit development, wells, septics, leach fields, expansion fields, and setbacks from everything. So I guess at this point, you have to wonder, does the, the building envelope really intend to do what it was set for?
Yeah, because there can't be much more drastic ground disturbance than installation of...
Than installation of a septic system, yeah. It's a, that's a really good point.
And I don't want the applicant to be delayed further than necessary, but then I don't want the applicant to get caught in a catch-22 of, well, now I'm building my building, and I'm going to put in my septic system, and you tell me I can't do it.
So it actually refers to wastewater as well?
For the potential to expand the building area, because it looks like it's in the picture.
You need to be up to your speaker.
But they...
You need to be up to your speaker.
Oh, sorry about that.
And turn it on, please.
I was just asking if they could expand the size of the building area if they needed to.
Oh, expand the, the envelope?
Yes.
I think we'd probably have to take a look at the, at the biologist. We'd probably have to get an opinion from the biologist at that point. Otherwise, otherwise, the only other alternative would be to, to initiate the requirement for a take permit.
So the take permit could make it okay?
So, so the biologist, between the biologist and, and State Fish and Wildlife Service, they're saying there's a potential for a taking unless you limit your development to this building envelope, because this is the, this is the site that the biologist said, if we develop this, there's no impact, because it's not going to affect any of the potential upland habitat. So if we allow development outside the building envelope, then there's a potential impact, and that, I think, would require additional mitigation in order to offset that, which could result in the take permit.
But couldn't they go back after the split is allowed, if it needed to be?
No, so this is actually, this building envelope is going to be required to be placed upon the recorded parcel map. So upon recordation of that building envelope, any subsequent building permits will be required or restricted to be within that envelope as dedicated on the map.
There's already two wells on these parcels, one on each, and so I assume he'll have to test those wells and so forth. That'll be included in the...
Right, yeah, there's a whole process of testing for nitrates and one thing or another. You have to obviously approve, if they haven't already, they may have already gone through that process with environmental management approving potable water.
Okay, now suppose he goes out next to the building envelope and digs a big hole for his septic tank now, and nobody can stop him from doing that. He can dig a hole on that property all he wants.
Correct. I mean, it still doesn't give him the author, it still doesn't make it okay to take a species, regardless of whether or not it's in, you know, relation to a discretionary action or just, you know, any other reason why you would be out on your property doing whatever it is you're doing. You know, a take is a take, so even if we're not having this discussion today, you know, there's still consequences for taking, you know, protected species. But yeah, it wouldn't, it wouldn't eliminate him from going out and putting in a septic system, or otherwise, building a house, or putting up any other buildings on his property absent this discretionary action.
Well, if he had somebody out there when he was digging his hole to make sure there were no salamanders running around there, which is highly unlikely there would be according to the habitat assessment, he would avoid this whole issue.
I suppose that would have to be a qualified biologist would be out accompanying the engineer.
I own a half-acre parcel, and it has a septic system on it. I know you can get it within there in the envelope, and mine actually has blue lines in it, too, and there's barely room, but there is room on that, so you definitely can put a septic system on a half-acre parcel. It's $20,000.
I suggest, is the applicant here, and how, do we know where the well is, because the septic system has to be just clear from the, so is that, if the applicant may have already looked into this and be aware that the half acre is sufficient, so instead of us speculating, can we ask you to come on up?
Yeah, so I'm here, so there is a well drilled on the property. It's outside of the building envelope, closer to the driveway on the bottom part of the map, closer to the, is it where the line is? Yeah, yeah. Is that where the driveway line, the thing is? It's right around there, so there's a well there. I think there can be an engineered septic in that building envelope. Otherwise, I've had a guy out there already, and he said it has to be where the oak trees are, because it's, inside that building envelope is, is all hard tan, so it'd be awfully difficult to put a septic system in there.
So you're aware that if we were to approve this today, the way it is, you wouldn't be able to put your septic system in, except within that boundary?
Honestly, all's I was proposing is, this is my grandma's property, and she bought the parcel A like 50 years ago, parcel B she bought about 20 years ago, and for some reason, she, you know, made it into her property, all one property. All I want to do is put the line back where it used to be. I don't know if it's going to be this big of a deal with the salamander thing. They've been out there, there's no salamanders out there. Never seen a salamander out there. Yeah, I wasn't aware that the septic thing could have to be in that envelope as well.
It's not the tank, it's the leach field that is likely, but...
Commissioner Lash, can we get clarification? Where did, where did you specifically read the language that said?
Okay, in page 2 of the resolution, it says, under number 2 down near the bottom of that paragraph, "Proposed parcel B is five acres in size and sufficient buildable area is available on it to accommodate residential construction and wastewater disposal." What gave my question my question is whether that... What gave my question my question is whether that statement was made with the building envelope in mind. And from what the applicant is saying, it's not where they have the building envelope would not be-
That's a little difficult because we can't dictate where the septic system is going to be placed because we don't know where there's adequate soil, so, you know, an engineer has to go out and identify where that is suitable to be placed based on soils and depth and whatever. So, yeah, it's a little, it's, it's-
But, but if we were to approve this the way it is right now-
Right, I agree.
He's stuck as far as-
Did that come directly from the biological? No?
Well, and I see a second problem in that we did not actually include the wording for the tree removal. And if tree, if the only place that they could get their septic system requires removal of trees, then we have the raptor taking issue again also. So it seems like it needs to go, in order to make it more flexible for the buyer and builder, that we need to find out what's possible, if there is any expansion of that disturbed area possible.
Is there another possibility here as far as, I asked the applicant, do you currently plan to build on parcel B?
I did. Going through this process has put me off of it a little bit.
No, I understand.
I have no plans anytime soon to build on the property now.
I was trying to ask the planning department if, if we approve it the way it is now, he could come back once he knows where the, well, like, does it take some ground disturbance to do the tests for the, for the septic? So I, you know, I'm, I'm looking for a way to-
Right, well, that would be a modification to the existing permit. I don't, I don't know that he really wants, would want to go down that road.
Yeah.
It seems, it seems more feasible for us to just deal with it. I mean, if we, if we continue it, we can take it back, you know, have some more discussions with the biologist, see what the likelihood of possibly either expanding the building envelope or at least if we can identify where the septic system needs to go, then we can have a specific, you know, discussion about whether or not that in itself is going to create an impact and what other solutions we have in place of just, you know, automatically requiring a take permit. Because I'm assuming that that's probably a pretty onerous task in itself, trying to go through the state for a take permit, and I wouldn't, I wouldn't recommend that.
Well, plus he'd have no assurance.
No.
And there'd be additional expense, additional time. I think if, we would be looking out for your best interests if we tried to resolve it now, right?
Was there any additional costs that would be associated to?
With the modification, yes.
Not, not now?
Not now.
But if he came back- No, if we just continued it now, we're still working on his initial application fees that were submitted to us. But if we take action today and then subsequently come back with a modification, that's a whole new application and basically it's starting over again. I, I wouldn't recommend that. I would, I would just like to be able to have, you know, a clear path forward for them now. You know, it would be great if we could take action today, but it doesn't sound like we're confident that that's gonna-
Another possible option would be an easement on to parcel A for the septic system.
I don't know that that's necessarily allowed. We would have to consult with the environmental management agency, but I, I've never heard of that being, at least not favorable. But certainly we could, we could see if that's a possibility, but I, I don't think it is.
You could just modify the line. The parcel is way larger than five acres.
Sure.
Instead of making the line straight, you could modify it in order to encompass maybe some less sensitive area.
Because the, the tiger salamander area is, the west part of parcel A is not included in that. So I was, I was thinking of doing an end run with the, with the septic system.
But couldn't they go to the biologist and just ask if that area, and then just define that as the septic area? If they go by where the trees are and the biologist can go take a look and see if they see any issues with it? And then just define that on this map?
Yeah, I think, I think that's a, that's a good solution. And, you know, in, in relation to the nesting birds, you know, that's a pretty common, it kind of really doesn't even make sense to me as a mitigation measure. You know, we can always add it as a condition of the map. It's pretty much something general that, you know, should be required on every map regardless anyway. But I, I don't, I don't know how you feel about, you know, just simply including that as a condition rather than rolling it into a mitigation measure and having to recirculate. I mean, it's, like I said, it's a pretty common practice. You'll find it as a pretty standard condition or mitigation.
I think what would serve our applicant is for him to do a little bit of research, looking at where the alternative leach field locations might be and then for us to speak to the biologist again and find out if it's possible to incorporate-
Yeah, if he's willing to go down that road right now, of course, that's gonna, at some point, you know, it's going to be at some expense to him. If he's not, if he's not prepared to build a house right now, then I, you know, I can't speak to whether or not that's, that's feasible at this point.
He's already spoken to someone, so he has some ideas about what's possible.
Well, I already have an engineered septic system drawn out for it, actually. And it's, it's in those trees that he, he said was the only, like, viable spot, really.
Okay.
Could, could you share that information with the planning staff? And then they can look to see if that can be accommodated.
And is that also, have you all already done the holes to make sure the drainage would be?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
This is sounding better. Yeah, per test.
So, so you've already gone through the permitting?
No, I just have plans drawn up for it, yeah.
So they've been out and profiled your hole, they dug the hole?
Yeah, yeah.
So you're ready to go, you just have to pay for your permit?
Right, well, I don't plan on doing it at this time. But yeah.
But you're ready?
At least you've identified an area that the biologist could look at and say yes or no.
Yeah, you're A, and if it's an A, then we can look at, is there a different line? But yeah.
Then at least we can-
Wouldn't be that complicated to just have them come back out, check your area, and then get back to planning and let them know what you're finding.
I think planning will have to speak to that.
And I would include the nesting mitigation measure.
Yes, absolutely, since we know it's in the trees.
You want it as mitigation?
Yes.
I think we need to-
Or a condition.
Well, I mean, that was our, our suggestion is that we could simply roll it in as a condition of the map.
That's fine.
I mean, it serves the same purpose.
I sensed some hesitation on the part of our council with that kind of thing.
I think that if a biologist is recommending it as mitigation, we know there's a potentially significant impact on birds, we have to include it as mitigation measure.
And it's, we're not going to be back till January anyway. He's not ready to build tomorrow. So getting this all squared away as cleanly as possible seems like that would be best for everyone.
So that's one more thing.
Yes.
Sounding like Columbo. The, the well, the well, the existing well casing is shown in the, in the tentative map. Now, I guess my question is, what constitutes disturbance of the ground? I mean, if you're gonna, if you're gonna need to dig more into that well or have pipes come from that well, that's, that's ground disturbance. And so I'd hate to have all this go on about the septic tank and then come back and say, oh, well, if you want to connect to the well, we got to do this all again, so.
We should make sure that trenching to connect the required services is allowed.
Yeah, yeah.
So, very good point.
Well, the well looks like it's in the middle of the parcel.
It does.
It does.
Not, not in the building envelope.
Yep.
So I, I just got just a dumb question. What if the landowner now decides to go out there and trench from the well over to the, the envelope now? And then maybe throws a septic system in there now and then comes back and says, well, I'm going to split this property? What, what would the-
Oh, you mean if he had done that prior to the middle of his discretionary application? In fact, he could, even, this application doesn't, isn't even needed for them to build a second residence on the parcel. So if they never came in with this, with this application, they have the right by, with zoning to actually build an accessory dwelling unit without any other discretion. They can go forth to the building department and submit plans and they can build it wherever they want as long as they're complying with, you know, setback requirements and construction requirements and so on and so on.
As long as they're not taking.
But they still can't take a species.
But they wouldn't, if they had done it previously, they wouldn't even have been aware of that.
And then they could split afterwards? I mean, I'm just, they could potentially split afterwards?
Potentially, sure.
And these same things would all get studied?
I mean, but we're having the discussion now, so it's a little late. But yeah, if, if, if in fact they had built a second residence and then decided, oh, for whatever reason, I want to separate these residences and came in and applied for a map.
That's why I said he should just go dig a hole. Make sure he didn't squish a salamander.
I, I think at this point, what we don't want to do is codify something that we know is problematic. And so it would make sense for us to try to find something that provides the required protections and allows him to develop this property and split this parcel off. So are you amenable to another continuation?
Yeah.
So before we go any further, we should see if there's any member of the public who would like to speak to this item. Do we have anyone? No, we don't. So we will open and close the public comment portion of this hearing. Okay, so we are in agreement that we should continue this. You guys will work with the applicant and you'll be back to us with something that we hope works for everybody.
Continue what, off calendar, without a specific date or anything?
Yeah, we'll have to at this point.
All right, thank you very much.
Did you want to vote to continue it?
Yeah, let's vote. Is there a motion to continue this item?
I'm making a motion to continue this item off calendar. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passes 5-0. Oh my gosh. Do, does anybody want a break before we go on to the next item? Okay, so let's take about a 10 minute break. And hopefully we're all set up and streaming. Are we on?
We are now.
Okay, so we are back in session and ready to begin item two, 2020-074, conditional use permit for Blue Mountain Electric Company, LLC. And Madeline, you are up again.
Yes. Give me just a minute here. All right. Okay. Hello again. So this is conditional use permit 2020-074 for the Blue Mountain Electric Company. So the applicant is requesting approval of a conditional use permit for the construction and operation of a community scale three megawatt biomass combined heat and power facility. This facility is intended to create electricity through gasification of sustainably sourced forest biomass. The site is located off of Railroad Flat Road in Willseville, shown here on the little yellow star. This is the parcel highlighted in green. It is accessory parcel number, number 012-011-014, which is a 13, which is 13 acres in size, subdivided from the Calaveras County Water District's wastewater treatment facility. So a little background here. This project was originally approved with an administrative use permit, project number 2015-011, which was approved by the planning director on June 23, 2017, for the Calaveras Healthy Impact Product Solutions, which I'll be referring to by its acronym, CHIPS. The AUP was set to expire on December 31, 2018, but was extended by the planning commission for two years, expiring on December 31, 2020. And on October 30, 2020, a new AUP application was received from the Blue Mountain Electric Company, which I'll be referring to as BME, for the proposed project on the same parcel. After reviewing the determination made by the former planning director that an AUP was the appropriate vehicle to process AUP number 2015-011 under the zoning code, the planning director determined that a conditional use permit was the proper permit type required for the project. Both an AUP and a CUP allow for conditions to be imposed on the project, but the CUP reply, requires planning commission approval. The public service zone in which the property is located does not allow for power generation facilities except under section 1748030A of the county code, requiring a conditional use permit for hydroelectric power generation. The code also provides that the county may find that similar uses consistent with the purposes of the chapter may also be added to the list of uses. Therefore, the county made the determination that reapproval must be through a CUP rather than an AUP. So the overall proposed project for the CUP has not changed from the previously approved AUP. However, the power facility would be operated by the Blue Mountain Electric Company on the CHIPS-owned parcel. Both projects were to construct and operate a biomass gasification facility, which will generate three megawatts of electrical power that would be exported to the grid. The biomass would come from timber harvest residuals and fuels treatment activities on private and public lands. The biomass feedstock will be converted to a conditioned producer gas in the gasifier and the gas is used in internal combustion engines to run generators to make electricity. The same major pieces of equipment will be used to support this operation and include a feedstock dryer system, gasifiers and their respective gas conditioning systems, internal combustion engine generator sets, a standby flare device, and front loader. The facility would still consume 25,500 bone dry tons of woody biomass per year, which would be delivered to the site by truck. The proposed facility will still average approximately six truckloads daily between March and November when biomass is accessible in the forest. It's still anticipated that the facility may need sufficient storage for up to five months of operations, approximately 10,625 bone dry tons of wood chips. The plant would still operate 24 hours a day, seven days a week, year round, and generate approximately 600 pounds of biochar per hour which will be sold. The only difference between the projects is that there has been a revision to the site plan to swap the locations of the facility equipment and structures with the biomass storage area. So this is the approved site plan from AUP 2015-011, which depicts the facility structures and equipment in the northwestern portion of the parcel and the biomass storage in the northeastern portion. The subject parcel is part of the former site of the Associated Lumber and Box Company, which was a large sawmill covering much of the CCWD wastewater treatment facility and closed its operations in 1968. A geotechnical engineering investigation conducted in June 2021 found that the- A geotechnical engineering investigation conducted in June 2021 found that the soil conditions in the part of the parcel originally proposed for the facility structures, the northwestern portion, did not meet the necessary structural report support requirements due to fill soils from the previous use as the lumber mill. However, the previously proposed biomass storage area in the northeastern portion of the parcel was found to meet the structural support needs for the facility, and it was recommended by the Geotech Company that the applicant revise the site plan to swap the facility structures and the equipment area with the biomass storage areas, which you can see here in the proposed site plan for the CUP. This revision will not change the project footprint, and therefore, the entire facility is still within the boundary of the project site, which was initially analyzed in the previous project. So the proposed facility, hopefully you can see a little bit of what is going on on this figure, is proposed to be located on concrete pad with a main office and engineering building approximately 5,400 square feet in size. The main building will house offices, break rooms, and the generators, protecting the equipment from the elements and reducing ambient noise. There's also a proposed 59-foot tall gasification gasification structure, which is a standalone structure approximately 1,800 square feet in size, as well as various small buildings and pads for water treatment, cooling towers, tank farm, and electrical transformer. So this is the building elevation, showing the main structure to the left and the gasification structure on the right. So I'm bringing back the 2020 aerial to show the subject parcel is completely surrounded by the parcels associated with the CCWD wastewater treatment facility, and it's also screened from the surrounding residential uses to the south by forest. The facility will use the northern half of the site, which further retains a buffer around the operation. Project access is via an easement through the adjacent CCWD-owned parcel to the east from Railroad Flat Road. An encroachment permit was already received, and the encroachment onto Railroad Flat Road was improved. The project application was circulated to county departments, local public agencies, state agencies, and federal agencies, as well as property owners within 300 feet of the subject parcel. The onsite wastewater department provided comments requiring the applicant to submit information that an adequate liquid waste disposal method can be completed as the parcel is not served by public sewer. In addition, comments were received from the public works department, including conditions requiring the project to meet all applicable requirements of the county road ordinance, the encroachment ordinance, the grading and drainage ordinance, and the road impact mitigation ordinance. Many of the requirements for the access road have already been completed. So the subject parcel is zoned public service and is designated as public and institutional in the county general plan. The surrounding parcels pertaining to the wastewater treatment plant are also zoned PS. The purpose of the PS zone is to classify lands that are used for public purposes, public utilities, and for public agencies. The public and institutional land use designation identifies public or quasi-public facilities. Typical uses include public buildings and grounds, schools, community centers, libraries, airports, cemeteries, fire stations, sewer and water treatment facilities, solid and liquid waste disposal facilities, power substations, and other similar and compatible uses. And as determined by the previous planning director, a power facility is permitted in the PS zone upon approval and validation of CUP. The facility will generate electricity to be sold to PG&E on their distribution level circuit, and will also serve a public purpose by supporting local wildlife protection efforts through consumption of biomass from timber harvest residuals and fuels treatment activities on regional private and public lands, which is consistent with the PS zone. The project as designed meets the performance standards for the PS zone as required by section 1748060 of the county code. The parking standard is per approved development plan with a minimum of two parking spaces. The proposed site plan includes, excuse me, eight parking spaces, including one for ADA for employees. Mitigations from the 2017 initial study for the previous project will require that 5% of the land area devoted to structures and parking shall be planted with new landscaping, which is the standard in the PS zone. There are no adjoining residences that would be affected by exterior lighting. However, mitigations from the 2017 initial study for the previous project will require exterior lighting to be shielded such that it does not shine directly off-site onto adjoining parcels of roads. And mitigation from the initial study will also reduce ambient noise levels of equipment such that the project shall conform to the standards of the noise element of the general plan for average and maximum noise levels. The proposed project is consistent with the goals and policies of the general plan's conservation element, including goal COS dash one, which is for healthy forests, woodlands, and rangelands to be free from unnatural accumulation of trees and brush close to their historic natural pre-fire suppression condition, thereby decreasing the risk of catastrophic wildfires and increasing water supply and quality, wildlife habitat and forage, air quality, scenic resources, and recreational opportunities. Also, policy COS one dash three, which is to encourage initiatives to utilize vegetation removed from forests, oak woodlands, and brushlands for energy production and greenhouse gas reduction. And policy 4.8, which is to encourage the use and installation of alternative energy generating systems, including wind, solar, biofuel, and other systems in new development and in retrofitting existing structures. There are no general plan implementation measures applicable to the review of this project that further restrict. So the nuts and bolts of this is the SEQA review. So an initial study and mitigated negative declaration was prepared and circulated for comments from May 10 to June 10, 2017, and adopted with the approval of administrative use permit two zero one five dash zero one one on June 23, 2017. The initial study analyzed the environmental impacts and determined that with the proposed mitigation measures, the project will not have a significant environmental impact. The proposed project is the same as the project analyzed in the 2017 initial study, except that the location of the structures and the equipment has been reconfigured, which is a minor technical change that does not affect the environmental analysis or conclusions as everything is still within the same footprint. As the potential impacts of the project were evaluated in a previously adopted initial study, and none of the factors triggering additional environmental review under SEQA guideline 15162 are present, the 2017 SEQA document provides a sufficient and adequate analysis of the environmental impacts. Thus, the county determined that an addendum pursuant to SEQA guideline 15167 is the appropriate environmental document for the proposed project. In 2018, the SEQA guidelines underwent a comprehensive update, which added three new sections to the checklist. And that's the Appendix G checklist. They are energy, tribal cultural resources, and wildfire. While, as discussed in more detail in the addendum, the fact that the state updated Appendix G after the county approved the 2017 initial study and mitigated negative declaration, does it not itself constitute a change or new information requiring a subsequent EIR? Staff did utilize the updated Appendix G criteria when analyzing whether an addendum was the appropriate environmental document for this project. Mitigation measures were incorporated in the 2017 initial study to reduce the impacts to less than significant levels. A mitigation, monitoring, and reporting program, which I will be referring to as the MMRP, for the 2017 initial study, was inadvertently not adopted with AUP two zero one five dash zero one one, but will be adopted now. And I want to note that the original copy in the packet was missing the last mitigation measure for noise, and you all have an updated copy with the corrected version. So this is Exhibit A to the resolution, as well as Attachment Four of the packet. And there are also copies at the front of the podium for the public. So no additional mitigation measures have been prepared, nor have any of the previous mitigation requirements mitigation measures been changed. Therefore, the measures contained within the MMRP are the same that were prepared and vetted for the original project. A condition of approval has been imposed on the project that requires conformance with the 2017 initial study and mitigated negative declaration to ensure compliance with the So an addendum was to the ISMND was prepared and includes a discussion of all the sections included in the 2017 SEQA document, as well as the new sections from the 2018 SEQA update. And I want to discuss discuss a few of the sections here, which had mitigation measures, as well as the new sections, and discuss the air quality section, since that was a big part of it. So the 2017 initial study determined that there would be no significant impact to aesthetics with mitigation. As the subject parcel is surrounded by the wastewater treatment facility and forest, the reconfiguration of the facility structures and equipment on the site would not increase potential impacts. Therefore, mitigation measures one dash one and one dash two remain appropriate, and there are no changes to either measure or new mitigations proposed. The air quality section of the 2017 initial study concluded that there were no significant impacts based on an analysis which projected emissions for the previous project based on data from similar facilities in Placer County and Madera County. This was a hypothetical analysis of stationary and mobile source emissions for the previous project using data from similar biomass projects. In order to determine the proposed emissions for the current project, the county retained Ray Kapahi with Environmental Permitting Specialists, Inc., to review the actual equipment list provided by the applicant. An air quality study was completed on May 12, 2021, and revised on July 20, and concluded that the emissions from the proposed project would still be well below the Calaveras County Air Pollution Control District's recommended thresholds of significance. The Air District's guidelines for assessing air quality impacts state that if any of the thresholds are exceeded and cannot be mitigated below the threshold, then a determination of significant air quality impacts must be made, and an environmental impact report is required. As the only change is the reconfiguration of the site plan and thresholds will not be exceeded, the project would not result in a potentially significant air quality impact, and no mitigation is required. The 2017 initial study also found that there would be a less than significant impact to biological resources with mitigation. A biological site assessment was conducted in 2015, which concluded that the site did not provide suitable habitat for sensitive species, and that there are no sensitive species in or adjacent to the project area, with the exception of the yellow-lipped pansy monkey flower, which is a special status plant that has been documented in several locations within 10 miles of the site. So an additional survey was conducted in 2016 to survey the site, which concluded that there are no yellow-lipped pansy monkey flower present, nor is there suitable habitat observed in the site. The reconfiguration of equipment on the site would not increase potential impacts to biological resources because no sensitive species were determined to occur on or near the site. So mitigation measures four dash one and four dash two still remain appropriate, and there are no changes to either measure or new mitigations proposed. The 2017 initial study also found that there would be less than significant impact to cultural resources with mitigation. A cultural resources survey was prepared in November 2015, which concluded there are no cultural resources present on the site, and none of the remains of the sawmill structures are eligible for recordation with the state. As the site has already been substantially disturbed from historic use, the reconfiguration of equipment on the site would not increase potential impacts, and mitigation measures five dash one and five dash two still apply to the project with no changes to either measure or additional mitigation. The energy section is from the 2018 update. As the project will generate electricity, which will be sold to PG&E on their distribution level circuit, and it's anticipated to use some of its own generated electricity for internal operations, the project will not result in wasteful, inefficient, or unnecessary consumption of energy resources during operations. Therefore, the project will have no impact. The 2017 initial study also found there would be a less than significant impact to hydrology and water quality with mitigation. A few potential jurisdictional waters of the U.S. were observed on the site during the 2015 biological assessment. These consist of a construction ditch, a constructed ditch along the northeastern boundary of the parcel with the majority offsite. The U.S. Army Corps of Engineers indicated in a letter dated January 6, 2016, that if the project stays within the area identified on the plan, a Department of the Army permit under section 404 of the Clean Water Act would not be required. Although the site plan has been modified to swap the biostorage area with the facility equipment and structures, the footprint of the project will not change, and therefore, the changes to the project would not increase potential impacts. And mitigation measures nine dash one and nine dash two remain adequate and with no changes or new mitigations proposed. The 2017 initial study found that there would be a less than significant impact to noise with mitigation because the project is conditioned to conform to the standards of the noise element of the general plan for average and maximum noise levels. The changes to the project would not increase potential impacts because the types of equipment being used are the same. So mitigation measure 12 dash one still remains adequate with no changes, and there are no new mitigations for noise proposed. So this measure, this mitigation measure was inadvertently omitted from the MMRP attached to the draft resolution. So I've amended the MMRP, which you all have. Also, the tribal cultural resources section was created during the 2018 update to the SEQA checklist. As discussed in the addendum, the proposed project would not result in a potentially significant impact to tribal cultural resources. And the wildfire section, which was also created during the 2018 update, as discussed in the addendum, the project would not result in potentially significant wildfire impact. So to conclude, the project as proposed conforms to the applicable goals and policies of the county general plan. The subject parcel is also not within a community plan area. The project is found to be compatible with the surrounding land uses and zoning in the vicinity, and there were no objections to the approval of the CUP from any landowner within 300 feet of the subject parcel. The subject parcel is 13 acres in size and is therefore adequate in land area to accommodate the proposed use, and was found to have safe and adequate access. This permit is conditioned for the protection of public health, safety, and welfare. And the potential impacts of the project were evaluated in a previously adopted initial study and mitigated negative declaration, which provides a sufficient and adequate analysis of the environmental impacts. Thus, the county determined that an addendum is the appropriate environmental document for the proposed project. The initial study and mitigated negative declaration and the addendum reveal this project will have a less than significant impact on the environment with mitigation. And I believe we have Ray Kapahi from the air quality consultant, if you have specific questions for him regarding that study, as well as the applicant who's here today.
Does anybody have any questions for Madeline or for their resource board?
I do. I'm the project is described in the resolution and elsewhere as a combined heat and power facility, and I don't see any reference to providing heat as a product of this operation. And I don't know if I missed something.
That might be a good question for the applicant to answer for us, since he knows more of the details of the engineering.
There's somewhere to the use of that.
There is in the in the original MND in the study. I seem to remember the heat was going to go to a greenhouse for the indigenous people to grow stuff. You're going to be piped over?
That was not included. That was not included in the CUP application, so I don't have an update on whether that's still part of the project or or not. But again... But again, the applicant can give us more details on that.
And when, could you bring up your figure that showed the previously approved site plan? Figure three to your staff report.
This one?
Yeah. It seems to me when you were discussing that, the way you got east and west next up. And I want to make sure that it's clear in the addendum, which I think at this point is confused, as to where the original facilities were intended to be and where they are now. And it seems to me with this map, which at the bottom of this site plan, it shows north being vertically up.
Yes.
That the facilities at that point were planned to be in the western part and had been shifted to the eastern part. It uses the term north eastern and northwestern. I think it'd be a lot easier if you just said east and west because where the buildings are now, which I see as being in the eastern part, it'd be misleading to say that they're in the northeastern part because they take up that whole side. Anyhow, I think if the addendum can be clarified in that respect to make sure that we've got the description matching the diagrams, I think it would avoid confusion. I don't need to go through each reference at this point. Then, the storage areas is referred to as a log and chip storage area. And yet, I don't see on any of the diagrams where the chipper is that would chip the logs. You help me on that.
I believe that there's a mobile chipper that was going to be brought on-site as needed. And again, this is something that the applicant can describe a little bit better for us.
That's fine. I can deal with that. And would that also apply to this question? What happens to the carbon dioxide or carbon monoxide that's produced in the gasification procedures? Is that something for the applicant?
Yes.
Okay. And what powers the gasification? That's also for the applicant?
What powers the gasification?
Yeah. Is it propane that's providing the heat?
Yes, let's ask them.
Okay. I think that's all I have for right now.
Does anybody else have any questions before we ask the applicant to speak and then we can ask questions? Okay. Let's hear from the applicant.
All right. Hello. My name is Greg Stangle. I'm delighted to be up here speaking to you today. Just very briefly to address the questions at hand, the primary use of the waste heat will be the fuel drying. So, there is a rotary drum dryer that will be entirely powered by waste heat. You know, we always look to provide thermal load because, you know, gasification takes place at, you know, between 750 and 1,000 degrees centigrade. And so, obviously, you know, we try to provide that. So, we have some interesting opportunities with the CCWD. And again, I'm unaware of the greenhouse. I do remember that from back in 2015 that CHIPS was talking about that. But, you know, it would significantly be to our advantage to find additional thermal load. But at the moment, the definitive thermal load will be used to power the dryers. In the unit we're building in Madera now, which will be the first one in California, this will be the second one in California, we're using the waste heat to provide also additionally a waste heat sauna. So, we could say we were, you know, employing waste heat. But here, just the chip drying. As to the chipper, because a chipper could produce the fuel we use for a year in a couple of weeks, it doesn't make sense for us to own a chipper. And so, our current arrangement with our contracted fuel purveyor is that they will bring in at their options logs or chips. We anticipate, based on the state of today's forest, that it will be primarily log form. But there are some projects that, you know, USFS or the BLM will do where they do inwards chipping. But we anticipate primarily round wood coming in. Round wood also, you know, round wood loses moisture, chips gain moisture. So, we like to leave it round as long as we can. And they will mobilize in once a quarter for a week or two, you know, most likely two weeks. And then that will produce, you know, the next quarter's worth of fuel. The third question.
Well, you're right there. If you don't mind my breaking your track. This morning, we just got this large objection to any procedures of our proceeding with this today and approving. But one point I think they're making is that the biofeed supply has changed considerably due to the Tamarac fire and the other fires that have happened this year and that you might end up not having sufficient supply.
Oh, oh, no, the complete opposite is true. And again, you know, I would point to our Madera facility and it's an unfortunate reality, I think. But when a fire comes through, you know, you can spend years doing a NEPA study to get permission to do forest stewardship. And when the fire comes through, now it's a public safety issue and that process is like, get that stuff out of here. Like, cow fire will drive those dozers right through. So, the unique thing about our Madera project is we're not even operating and we are actually being paid to receive trees. So, quite, you know, quite the opposite is true. The other thing I would say is these facilities are uniquely small. And this is the Forest Service's biggest complaint with us is we just don't use enough wood. California in the last couple of years has taken about 200 megawatts of installed large biomass capacity offline. And, you know, regrettably, we got involved with CHIPS on this project in 2015. You know, we signed a power purchase agreement with, well, we had the use permit in 2017. We signed a power purchase agreement with PG&E in 2018. I mean, these things take a long time. And, you know, we've found that taking 200 megawatts of capacity that was working just fine three, four years ago offline, and we're still trying to build the first 2-megawatt plant in Madera County, and we expect that to be online by mid-next year, you know, I could power this thing for a year just by using the amount of consultant studies that have been written about the amount of fuel in the forest.
Thank you. I'm sorry.
No, no, no. And your question on CO and CO2. So, this is the great wonder of gasification and it's really starting to change the dynamic. So, first of all, with gasification, we get hydrogen. Most people think of biogas, they think of methane. So, our gas is about, you know, anywhere from, let's say, up to round numbers, 20% hydrogen and 20% CO. So, hydrogen has got that really fast flame speed that engines aren't going to like so much. And CO, also flammable, provides the wet blanket. So, it is really the combination of H2 and CO that actually help us maximize the amount of power, you know, off that internal combustion natural gas genset that just, you know, doesn't know or care what you're, you know, what you're giving it.
Do you actually use all the gas to produce a gasification?
Yes, and 50% of the gas is nitrogen. And so, basically, instead of having that fuel-air mixture where you're really bringing in a lot of air, you know, you've got a natural gas line going in like this, you've got an air going in like this. We have fuel going in like this, but if you will, you could consider it premixed with the air. And then, by virtue of the fact that it is not a combustion process, right? It is thermal decomposition. So, we don't actually generate CO2. We generate carbon in solid form, which gets referred to as biochar. And truthfully, it's the only reason we're still standing here today. Because when we built that pilot project in Merced in 2010, our PPA was at 10 cents. We thought that was enough. We built a half a megawatt unit. We thought that was a great size. It takes three Californians to run it. You know, 500 KW times 10 cents is 50 bucks an hour. But the biochar, you know, the farmers showed up and said, "Look, we need this for our soil because of the water." And in California, we grow all these high-value specialty crops. We've got, you know, high capex fields. Like, this ain't corn we grow out here. And so, what happens is we sell that biochar to farmers who put it in their soil and it works like filtered carbon. And so, the water sits in the soil longer, so it improves the water-holding capacity of the soil. More recently, our clients have become people like City of Los Angeles and Caltrans who use it for stormwater filtration. So, for instance, Forest Biochar from the Arnold area actually is now in the 580-80 interchange. There's a big giant, they call them BMPs, it's kind of like an engineered hole in the ground, that's a big giant carbon filter. And the Carquinas Bridge we did for Caltrans where, you know, that biochar goes there, the stormwater that, you know, washes all the molybdenum cadmium chromium off the roadways goes into that char.
So, I'm sorry. On that char, I was reading that you'll produce roughly 14,000 pounds per day, 7.2 tons per day. Were you going to store it on this facility? Because I didn't see anything, I'm trying to think of the storing char.
We pack into three cubic yard super sacks. And so, it actually doesn't particularly take up that much space. But we anticipate not having to store an awful lot of that onsite. I mean, indeed, you know, we kind of sell that stuff, you know, as soon as it.
Was that taken into account under the study for traffic in and out selling the char?
Yes, you know, based on the percentage going in. And so, you know, our attempt is, because with logs, we bring in a lot of material in high-side end dumps that we would get that backhaul, because you want a backhaul, that we would get that backhaul going out by using the high-side end dumps.
But as the letter documents we received today did bring up a good point is when you're bringing in, you're going from a location nearby and then backhauling, you would have to take it, export it more likely outside the county, like you explained in Alameda or Concha Costa County. That raises the effect of the greenhouse gas emissions.
Right. And so, we produce about 202 kilograms per hour is the expected output from the facility, if memory serves. So, you know, 440 pounds an hour, a two cubic yard sack weighs about 1,000 pounds. So, the, if you will, the density of the material out, I can't do the math in my head, but it is a very small fraction compared to the fuel in. So, it's about 9% by weight.
So, the volume's larger though. So, how would it be for though?
The volume is very, it's very.
Yeah, it's a very light material. In fact, it makes shipping at great distances problematic because it's kind of like popcorn.
But I don't know if I heard the answer to his question that these are coming from, your logs are coming from the forest.
Correct.
But they're not being, the biochar's not being sent back to the forest.
Well, we do sell to the Forest Service. You know, they are, I think, our second largest customer. They use biochar in reforestation activities. You know, so, it's not, I mean, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to suggest that we intend for all of the biochar to go to the forest. We do not. You know, we send a lot of biochar to Lary County, Fresno County, and that, yeah.
I think the question is, so the truck is coming in loaded with logs, it's probably not leaving loaded with biochar because it's going back to pick up more logs. And the biochar is going to a variety of places, either to agricultural use or filtration use, a construction site somewhere. And so, they aren't necessarily those same trucks. And so, has that additional trucking been factored into these?
We did, you know, we did detail that in our operational statement, I believe. We would though, you know, you can never guarantee, but we would always work very, very hard to use the same trucks for the simple reason of our biggest cost is trucking. You know, and the revenue from the biochar is not cute. It is necessary for, it is necessary for the business.
So, I'm curious about the biochar. So, it's a carbon sequestration?
Yeah, and it's crazy.
And what is the length of time? So, does it ever give up that carbon?
No. And so, this is why they give you carbon credits for it. It's just that I've been in this business since 1999. I've been hearing about carbon credits since that time. I'm yet to turn one into a dollar bill. But, and that's the thing we're kind of waving our arms about is everybody's talking about carbon sequestration. Well, shoot, we do this carbon sequestration by accident. I mean, it just, it just happens. We can't make syn gas without making biochar. We can't make biochar without making gas. We just happen to utilize a process where our gas is clean enough that it can be used as fuel. There are a lot of pyrolysis units now trying to come forward that only make the biochar and then those off gases are just sort of, you know, flared off. You know, with the gasification process, it's a, you know, it's more expensive, but it's a sort of much more sophisticated thing. So, your gas gets clean enough that you can, you know, run a turbocharged engine or, you know, other things you can do with that primary fuel.
So, what is actually, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, go.
What's actually powering the gasification? Is this a perpetual motion or are you?
It is. It is an exothermic reaction. So, once you start it and it's hot, that, as long as you keep putting fuel on it, it continues to operate. So, there is no, you know, subsequent fossil fuel input once it's running.
So, I mean, you light it with propane or something of this sort?
Yes, yes.
You were saying that you have, you're going to bring in a subcontractor or whoever to grind these logs in place?
Correct.
And then, in the documents, addendum to the SEQA, it states that they use an electric grinder. Is that correct, that they have electric grinder? Because the grinders that I see running around Calaveras County or. Because the grinders that I see running around Calaveras County are diesel powered, which they run, you know, the tree limbs and stuff through. Are they going to use?
I, I think it's difficult for me to determine that at this point. I would tell you, if we go the route in the future of putting in our own grinder, it would definitively be an electric grinder. If it's, if it's brought in, you know, we have a, you know, we have a contract with a fuel provider to provide us with fuel. We do, we do not specify what equipment.
Stating that you're using an electric grinder, but in reality, you're not going to use an electric grinder. Is that correct?
I believe that is correct, yeah.
So this is a false amendment to the CECL?
Well, I, I would, I guess I would, I don't know what the right term is. I, I would object to the characterization that it is false. We.
But your intention is to use a subcontractor that's going to use a gas propelled grinder, but here it states that you're going to use.
Our, our initial intention is to use a subcontractor. And we have that subcontract in, and we have that contract in place.
So I have some question.
Yeah, go ahead.
About the, in our, in our package, this, this picture that's showing a point of interconnect?
Yes.
That, that is attachment one vicinity and site maps, the source of Phoenix energy. It doesn't really go with what the document that precedes it, but it's in here. Is that, it's showing a point of interconnect, POI. Is that where the Blue Mountain Power connects to PG&E?
Yeah, that, that is, that is a PG&E document. So that is, that is where the PG&E line terminates.
Okay.
And so our, if you will, contractual legal delivery to PG&E is when we get to their, when we, when we get to their line.
And I'm just, I'm concerned about power lines and wildfire hazards. That's where I'm.
As are we.
Just to give you the context of where my questions are going. To me, that appears on this map to be about maybe 2,000 feet down a wooded road. And I'm, I'm sure everyone in this room is aware of the history of wildfires recently started in California by power transmission lines, including the 2015 mute fire that affected almost 100 square miles, mostly in Calaveras County. So people in the county, the county itself is very aware and concerned about this. And as I sure you are too, because I think that was a PG&E's problem with power lines was very much a contributing cause to their bankruptcy. So have you received the proposed additional condition that I'm suggesting be added to the resolution?
We, we have not.
Oh, and that? Did you provide him with that? I'm sorry.
Oh, no, no, that's all right.
Get up to, for anyone who might possibly be listening at home, this now says, I, I would suggest this condition be added to our resolution as condition two dash four. With full exposition by applicant of its plans regarding electrical transmission safety, applicant shall verify that to and including the point of interconnect to Pacific Gas and Electric Facilities, there shall be full compliance with all state statutes, regulations, and guidelines pertaining to design, construction, and operational standards regarding the safe transmission of electric power. So without imposing any additional substantive burdens on the applicant, other than exposition of what your plans are and an assurance that you're going to be complying with all the applicable state requirements, this condition would be put in there in order for us to show our concern about the potential of wildfire resulting from the power lines. Would you agree?
We have absolutely no objection whatsoever. We share your concern and, and the existence of these plants is in fact, you know, it was Cal Fire that promoted the legislation that created doing small biomass in the forest for the reduction of fire danger. We've got to have something to do with this excess material. So we absolutely share your concern. I see no issue with that.
You agree with that?
Absolutely. Now, now, I, I should tell you that we won't get to do that work. PG&E will do that work. We will pay them. In fact, we already have paid them because we have to pay them upfront in advance. So they were, they were paid their pound of flesh in, I believe it was June of, of last year.
Yeah.
But, but, you know, PG&E will be responsible for bringing that wire from their place to our, to, over to the parcel that was on your map.
Great, okay. That's, you will fully disclose that to the planning department and everything that's going on.
One hundred percent, absolutely.
That's great. Now, you mentioned you do have a contract with PG&E. If PG&E goes into bankruptcy again, what, what happens?
I'm sorry, sir, you mean their third bankruptcy?
Yeah, well.
Do I understand that correctly? Yes, and the first bankruptcy was a doozy. And it took us about a year to get all the banks back.
Right.
On, on, on track. And, and again, you know, no, no harm, no foul. We were able to continue. And I would, I would imagine, notwithstanding the, you know, relief that the legislature sure just granted them for further wildfire damage, it would be perhaps less problematic for us if it happened a second time. But, you know, I will tell you bluntly, that alone caused almost exactly 12 months of delay.
I remember.
In this project.
Great, thank you very much.
So I, I'd like to return to Commissioner Henderson's question about the grinder, which you mentioned that the grinder can create all the fuel you need in a very short period of time. So it won't be operating for a long length of time there at your property. However, I was wondering what, what was anticipated in 2017? Was the same operational flow anticipated that there would be logs brought and you would be using a sub, it wasn't you maybe at the time, using a subcontractor to grind onsite? And then now in 2021, now it's saying that that grinder may be electric. Is that reflected somewhere in these new numbers?
In 2017, the project, we were the developer contracted to CHIPS.
Okay.
And again, I'm, I'm speaking for them. And so I just, I want to give that, like, you know, they, they should perhaps speak for themselves. But there, there was a plan for them to be running their own chip and grind operation on that site. That was, that was the intention of CHIPS. Last year, I think, you know, when it got time to starting signing, you know, loan documentation, I, I think, you know, CHIPS as a 501(c)(3) decided that they would rather focus on their areas of excellence, which is in field work, in woods work. And, and we would, you know, take the handoff and, and carry on with the power plant, which is what we do for a living, you know, by ourselves. We do not, we, we are not fueled, we're not in the fuel business. We, we, you know, my workers' comp is, is 6% running a power plant. If I start running their chippers, you'll find it's 40. So we have no desire or intent unless circumstances compel us to, to, to get into the, the, you know, the chipper business.
So where is the emissions resulting from the chipping operations reflected in the numbers that we've seen? Do you, do you know?
I, I think Ray or Evan on the Zoom would probably be.
Evan Edgar, live from Sacramento. I can chime in at your convenience.
Sure. Go ahead, chime in.
Okay. My name's Evan Edgar. I'm from Edgar Associates in Sacramento, California. I'm the contract engineer for Blue Mountain. Been with this technology since 2009. I wish I could be there today, but I'm under quarantine, so I can't make it up there today. So I'm surviving COVID here in Sacramento. But I've been working with that electric chipper company called Vermeer. And Vermeer is a mobile electrical grinder. Since this facility will be making a lot of kilowatts, it makes all the sense in the world to have a mobile electrical grinder. And as, as more of these facilities go up and running from Merced to Madera to Calaveras, the plan is to rotate this electrical grinder to all the different locations once a quarter. So initially, whatever stockpile onsite may be ground, but in the calculations by Ray Kapai, there is an intent that, that electrical grinder would be in place to service this, you know, past the first couple of quarters. So initially, you may have to grind what's onsite, but of the Vermeer mobile grinder was proposed in the plan, and that's what will happen in the future. And the emissions for that would be zero.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I guess I'd have a question for the local air quality person. And that, apparently, there will be a few loads that will be done with possibly a diesel powered chipper. And is, is that considered a significant air quality problem? Or, or is it something that's already been considered in the figures we have before us?
Hey, your mute button.
There you go.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. The, the project boundary excluded the chipper and the diesel engine. That was really, those emissions were not part of the scope of this project, and we did not look at. But I can still answer your question whether those impacts would be significant or not, because I've done quite a bit of work on diesel powered grinders. Basically, the new grinders that are being used and are being permitted right now, all of them are equipped with the latest tier four emission technology. And these are very, very clean units as compared to something just two years ago. And so as a result of these very stringent emission limits on these engines, the impacts have now been reduced to less than significant because of that. The stipulation is that they use current equipment using tier four engines as opposed to a very old engine. An old engine could not be permitted today, at least not in, in Calaveras County.
So we can be confident that any chipper that's fueled by fossil fuels on this project would be of that generation of chippers?
Yes, I, I think that's, that's a fair statement.
Thank you. That's very helpful. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, the wood chips, just a question. When you bring in the wood, it says a one month supply of wood would be about 2,700 or 27 tons of wood chips. Is that the bone dry measurement or is that just straight tiny?
We measure, and I know, I appreciate that point because it gets very, you know, a healthy forest is going to be 40 to 50% MC. We are not in a healthy forest. We're seeing logs come in at 20, at 20 to 30. We do not anticipate that being a permanent condition, but it is today. When we do our map, we do it at 10% MC, which is the, the moisture content at which we wish to go into the gasifier. Because some of that H2O ends up becoming our H2. You know, we need the water to get the hydrogen, so we can't put it in bone dry, but we don't like to put it in sloppy wet. And then we, you know, we waste a bunch of energy dehydrating the, the water.
And that's one of the byproducts of steam and you just released that out, this conversation with how that operates or?
Yes, yes. The system is actually water accretive because of the water in the wood. And this is, you know, again, one of the things that's exciting for us in our, in our, you know, the work we're doing with CCWD is, you know, we're hoping to utilize some purple pipe, you know, gray water basically as they're, I don't know, if you can picture it in your mind, there's, you know, those two big ponds on the left and one big pond on the right. So CCWD is going to connect those ponds. And there's right now, you know, our engineers are working with their engineers next Tuesday to kind of, you know, see how we can, you know, how we can tie into that. But, but yeah, I mean, we use evaporative cooling towers, adiabatic cooling towers, and that will make some of that water evaporate.
No, you're going to be running at high, high temperatures, of course. Has there been any, in this technology, any failures that could cause, you know, everybody's worried about forest fires in our area. Has there been any, any failures in this technology resolving in fires or explosion? High temperatures and high pressures?
Not that we, not that we are aware of. I will tell you one thing we did do here, which is different, which is we have switched our flares from candlestick flares, where you can see a visible flame, to a fully enclosed flare. Now, there, there is an emissions trade off when you do that. We're going to generate a little bit more thermal NOx because by keeping the flare like basically in a fully enclosed state, it's, it's hotter, NOx is going to form at higher temperatures. But since our flare is, you know, predominantly a standby emergency startup shutdown device, I mean, obviously, we can't make money with that gas if it burns in a flare. You know, we, we were confident that that was the right trade off. So I would say if anything, you know, we've taken a different tack when we have brought these projects up to the, to the forest.
We received a packet today like they've mentioned of concerns that people have brought to our attention about the emissions from the steam. Do they have some kind of a scrubber inside of there? How do they ensure that these emissions don't affect? They say that they're cancer causing emissions that come out of the, I mean, everything causes cancer these days, but do they have some kind of a scrubber system to, to catch those?
We use a fully enclosed dissolved air flotation, carbon filtration, so there is no steam. You know, I, I couldn't, I mean, again, I, this is how this firm works and they, you know, I mean, we've been through this before in Madera Planning and Madera and, you know, San Martin Valley, ABCD. So, you know, I haven't seen it. I suspect it's a, I suspect it's a copy of what we've seen before, but there is no, there is no steam in the process. There can be with the cooling towers in the winter, you know, when the wet bulb gets to a certain point, but that's fresh water, not, not processed water. And so we do hot gas cleaning first that does not involve water. And then you do cold gas cleaning that does involve scrubbers. And then that scrubber water goes through dissolved air flotation, enclosed building, you know, carbon filtration. you know, carbon filtration. We, I, you know, I'm not a PhD chemist, but I sort of find that preposterous.
How much water do you use for this process? Or is it fresh water?
Yeah, again, yeah, this is, these are things that we are very excited to talk to people about, because nobody pays enough attention to how much fresh water we use in power generation. This is actually probably the most water-efficient process you can use, and indeed, the system itself is water-accretive. So I do not have that number committed to memory, but we are delighted to, you know, we are delighted to provide it to you. You know, I'd point out, you know, we've certainly had letters of support from CCWD in, you know, a number of processes we've gone through with, you know, the Forest Service and CAL FIRE. So we are, you know, we're certainly excited about the possibilities of that partnership. You know, we take water very, very seriously, because we're in California. So again, we look to use, you know, adiabatic cooling towers, so you're, you know, it's more expensive, but you're basically using a giant radiator instead of, you know, significant evaporation. But yeah, but I'm happy to provide the exact figure for this plant, you know, in writing.
Anybody else? I have one more question. So I noticed that while your emissions related to mobile equipment went down from the original estimates to the current estimates, but the stationary equipment went up. Still very low in absolute numbers, but I'm curious if that is because the original estimates were just extraordinarily optimistic, because I would have expected newer equipment to have reduced emissions.
I'm going to ask Evan and Ray to jump in if needed. I will say, I will say two things. It's the exact same engine. It's the Janbacher J622 of them. So there should be, you know, if there is a difference, and of course, and this is the problem with these projects, is they take years and years. So yeah, you start with an Atari and you end up with the PlayStation 12 by the time you're done, but it's hard for me to imagine that there would be a meaningful difference. In the flare that I just talked about, we did make that change from a candlestick to a fully enclosed flare, and that will definitely change the NOx. But the flare, it would be, in the aggregate, a small component of the total emissions. So, but I don't have any, like, I can't picture in my mind what a significant change you might be referring to, so maybe Evan or Ray could jump in there.
Okay, so first of all, I mean, that's correct. It's the same engine, but remember that at the tailpipe of the engine, they're putting in SCR and other devices to clean up the exhaust. And so those may not be identical to what was there before, and that would affect the emission, but not, you know, significantly. And as far as the flare goes, typically, the flares that I've seen used and permitted have a temperature minimum of 800 degrees F and a residence time of two seconds. And that pretty well will eliminate any VOCs that you may have coming from the flare. But in looking at the application we got this time, and I compared it with the numbers, because I did the analysis back, the original analysis also, and the main difference is that with this time, we're providing, the applicant has provided much more up-to-date and much more detailed information that allows us to pinpoint the emissions with far more greater accuracy, which is more than we had last time. So that's why there's some minor differences. But overall, I would say in a nutshell, really, my conclusions haven't changed. The project essentially is the same. They, yeah, they moved some equipment, some buildings and stuff around, but that does not materially affect the air quality impacts or the permitting aspect. It may affect other aspects, but not the air quality.
Thank you. Anything else before we open this up for public comment? All right.
Can I, can I take one of these, or?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak to this item? Is there anyone online who would like to speak to this item?
Yes.
Let me get them off. Mr. Carmichael, you can go ahead and speak.
Great, thank you. Good morning. Can everybody hear me?
Not too well.
Okay.
Can't see him. Can't see him, can't hear him.
Yeah, hard to hear.
Is this any better? I've got.
Yes.
Great. All right, well, good morning, Chair Plotnick, Commissioners and Staff. My name is Kevin Carmichael. I'm an attorney with Adams-Broadwell, Joseph N. Cardozo, and I am here on Zoom on behalf of Citizens for Responsible Industry, a coalition of labor organizations who may be adversely affected by the potential public and worker health and safety hazards of the project. We urge the Commission not to approve the project today. The county cannot rely on an addendum to the 2017 MND because that MND was not fully adopted. As the staff report explains, the MMRP was not adopted with the MND, which renders the MND legally deficient, so the Commission cannot remedy this error by adopting the 2017 MMRP as part of this addendum. This approach is not authorized by law. The purpose of an addendum is to analyze minor technical changes or additions to a project and not to correct facial defects in the original SEQA document. There is no legal authority allowing the adoption of an MMRP that was part of a prior SEQA document by attaching it to an addendum. And as the Court of Appeal recently explained, there is nothing in the text of SEQA or common law interpreting SEQA suggesting that a project's impact analysis or mitigation may be divided across different types of environmental review, such that some impacts are analyzed in an MND and others are analyzed in a different SEQA document. Additionally, there are several new and significant environmental impacts that the project will have on air quality, greenhouse gas emissions, public health, transportation, and biological resources that neither the 2017 MND or the project's addendum address. Public Resources Code, Section 21166, requires that the lead agency prepare a subsequent environmental impact report where a substantial change in the project's circumstances will cause new significant effects, or where new information demonstrates the project has new or more significant environmental effects than previously analyzed. Recent wildfires have affected the forests supplying feedstock to the project, and the changes to these forests are not addressed in the addendum. Our air quality expert found that changes in the fuel source could result in the release of toxic air contaminants that are not addressed in the MND or the addendum. We urge the Commission to remand the project to staff to prepare a legally adequate environmental impact report that fully analyzes the project and gives the public an opportunity to review the project's environmental impacts. Thank you for your time.
Are there any questions?
Yes. Do you have any authority that a mitigated negative declaration that was in fact adopted, that you say is facially invalid, was in the eyes of the law never adopted?
I'm sorry, could you restate the question? I'm not sure.
Yes. The mitigated negative declaration was in fact adopted on June 23, 2017. You take the position that it's facially invalid, and so you say it was never adopted. Is there any authority for the proposition that an MND that was in fact adopted is not adopted?
Looking to the Public Resources Code, Section 21081.6, an MND, when an MND is found to be appropriate for a project, the lead agency is required to adopt an MMRP for the changes made to the project or the conditions of project approval with that This is a unique situation where the MND does not include the MMRP, which is at the heart of what an MND requires. And so that is, that is the basis of this challenge.
And that might have been a decent point had it been made during the time period to challenge the original MND, but no challenge was made then. Now, a second question. The county can only prepare a subsequent environmental document if one of the three criteria are met, which is a change in the project, a change in the circumstances, or new information. And this come to light, and the time period that governs that is a time of adoption or certification of the environmental document. Is that correct? In other words, it has to be a change in the project, or a change in circumstance, or new, or new information that comes to light after the adoption of the original environmental document, correct?
I believe what, how you've restated SEQA is correct, yes.
All right. Now, what change in the circumstances have you identified after June 23, 2017? Because the Butte Fire was before.
Mm-hmm.
Are you relying on?
First, we're relying on the existence of the Caldor Fire and the Tamarac Fire, which were inside of the radius of the fuel availability study conducted for the prior MND. Additionally, the rearrangement of the site leads to, as detailed in our letter, leads to significant biological impacts on wetlands that were not studied in the MND and came about due to rearrangement of the equipment on site.
Did you, did you hear the comments by the applicant that fuel is not going to be a problem, because there's all kinds of dead wood now that's been created by these fires, and this would apply equally to the Caldor and Tamarac Fires? The Tamarac Fire being long ways from here, by the way.
Right.
What is your response to that point?
I would, I would encourage a study to be done of fuel availability to show that that is the case. And if, in fact, the applicant is now driving further away from the site to go recover wood from the Tamarac Fire, which is further away, as you say, then the emissions from those mobile sources and caused by this project need to be analyzed.
He hasn't claimed he's driving further away. There's plenty of dead wood in this county, and that was, that was known in 2017, because the Butte Fire had already gone through. I would also make the point, Mr. Carmichael, that your written submission was in violation of our rules. Under our rules, written comments had to be filed not later than 5 o'clock, 5:00 PM on the Monday before the hearing with the planning commission. This was not. It was given to us this morning with a 17-page letter from council and 13 pages of comments from consultants. And my position is, it's not properly part of the record, just so you know that.
Can I break in? It also provides in our rules, which are readily available on the planning commission website under policies, that it says applicants, appellant should not expect an untimely submitted document to be read or considered by the commission or staff prior to or during the hearing, although the commission retains discretion to do so. Back to you.
Are there any further questions?
No, I have no more questions.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else online?
Mr. Wills, would you like to speak?
Are you, this is Steve Walensky. Is that who you're speaking to?
It's showing up as Frank Wills. We'd love to hear from you.
I'm, by the way, I'm sorry not to be there. I'm in the Mojave Desert at the moment and just drove into range so I could listen in on this. But I do have a couple of comments, if that's, if this is timely and appropriate at this moment.
Certainly.
First, I want to thank the Commission for holding these hearings. As you know, we've been at this now for over a decade, and CHIPS has been involved from the beginning. We are the owners of the property and are partners with Phoenix in getting this project done. You also know that we have gone through every possible study, environmental review, and all kinds of ruleouts. Spotted owl and monkey flowers have been mentioned here. But I want to remind people that what we're doing here is remediating a former mill site. This was, this was a lumber mill and had all kinds of things we had to clean up, and the environmental impacts of what we're doing is actually improve the property to date and would continue to do so. Second issue, another issue that came up here is the impact of the fires that happened. CHIPS is very familiar with all of these areas, and we have crews working in post-fire interventions in the campfire up in Butte County. We have people already in the, working on restoration and stewardship issues with the Butte Fire here, as well as now in the next year, we'll be working both in Caldor and Tamarac. But I should also tell you that we have many projects, and there's so much that has come in, so much, so many contracts, so many resources have come into Calaveras and Amador Counties in areas that are not yet burned to try to reduce fuels and try to develop healthier and more resilient forests. There has to be a lot of understory taken out. There have to be, and there's a lot of, from the bug kills still, as many of you know, almost everybody's yard here is a log deck. So the idea that these fires would somehow be a new environmental consideration, it is, but not in the way it's being brought forward here. We've got serious problems with the forests all around us, and if there's not some way to have value-added products come out of what used to be wood waste, unmerchandable timber, I'm not sure what's going to happen here. The forest economy that is sustainable, and I'm really glad to hear Adams-Broadwell and the Associated Building Trades get interested in the environment here, but the, there are a couple of key issues that foothill communities need to deal with. First is we've got high unemployment, and we need people locally to be working these things. So we can't be making agreements as people try to leverage environmental issues for a project labor agreement, as has been done in a number of other circumstances. a project labor agreement, as has been done in a number of other circumstances. And the same firm appears in all of them. Every time one of these small local projects comes up, people want, some people, some interests, want the people who build and operate these to be people who are already in Bay Area-based labor unions. And as a long-term labor person myself, I'm for safe working conditions, and I'm for environmental issues. That's why we do this work. But I do not think that it is an appropriate thing to leverage what is supposed to be a local economic benefit and a local environmental restoration and have people once again from outside, which has happened almost every fire and a lot of contracts over the last 30 years here, have gone to people who are not here in this local place. And our whole mission, CHIPS' mission, is to try to have a triple bottom line. One is to do environmental restoration. One is to have local benefit and local economies improved. And the third issue is to, in that endeavor, to have local people employed in our own backyard to do this work. This intervention that I'm hearing today is, does not mitigate toward that end. And I believe that we in Calaveras County need to develop our economies in an environmentally sound way. We need to have the benefit of these, of economic projects come home to our own locations. And we need our own people, the folks who have been long-term unemployed in places where these mills shut down. This project is designed to try to overcome 30 years since this mills, since all of our mills shut down. This is a long-term effort, and we have jumped through every environmental hoop possible because we believe in this process. And we support the county and its due diligence, and it's actually forcing us to jump through a lot of hoops that we didn't even know existed when we started. But we are pleased to be coming to the end of this with your due diligence and the enormously detailed effort that we've put in to try to answer every question that has come up over these 10 years. If this project gets hung up on an effort to leverage a project labor agreement from people in urban places, I fear that we have not lived up to what I think everybody in Calaveras County is feeling, which is, it's time we develop our own economy and have it benefit our own people. I'm tired of exporting our kids as our major export because there's no jobs here. And it's important that these jobs be filled by local personnel in the communities that are so hard-pressed and now have experienced the terrible displacements of the Butte Fire, and now the threat of fire to the rest of our communities. We need to get these projects going to mitigate that, to restore environmental health to our forests, to bring people to work that need it here. And we need to do this before those of us who get long the tooth expire. It's been a long effort. Please, please, find a way to approve this in an expeditious way so that we can roll up our sleeves and get to work about it.
Thank you.
Actually, I have a question for former supervisor Walensky. This is Ladish here.
Hey, Tim.
How are you?
Well, getting warm in this van in the desert, but.
This will be a quick one. I know, generally speaking, there's a rule that dead trees that have burned or still standing are only good for lumber for two years or so. How long are they good for using as a biofeed in a facility like this?
It depends on the species, and it depends on the amount of burn. Sometimes the hot burns make it useless for all purposes. But a lot of the Caldor Fire and some of the Tamarack Fire, and probably about half of the Butte Fire, have more longstanding things. We have oaks that are still up from the Butte Fire years ago that are perfectly usable. We have a number of ponderosa pines and cedars, as well as dug fir, that are lasting much longer than would be merchantable timber that could be used in this type of process. It is also true that we continue to have, although not on the scale of a few years ago, but there's still bug kill occurring throughout our forests in the central Sierra. And those also have a short life for merchantable timber, but a long life, much longer, at least, at least two to three times longer for this kind of application.
Thanks a lot.
Do we have anybody else online?
No.
Okay. Then we will close the public comment portion of this hearing. And commissioners, do you have questions for staff or the applicant? Or discussion items you'd like to bring up?
Well, I'd like to continue with the discussion there. No, I've already asked you the question. It's the, about electrical transmission lines. Yesterday evening, I came across an ordinance, Ordinance 17.04.090, that, as part of it says, electrical transmission lines of 200 kilovolts or more require review by the planning commission to determine if the project will have a significant effect on the environment. And we're dealing here with a 3-megawatt facility. If I've done my calculations right, 3-megawatts is 15 times more than the equivalent of 200 kilovolts, so this would apply. I think what we're doing today is looking at the significant, whether there's a significant effect on the environment. And I am submitting this proposed conditional use permit on the basis of another statute, the statute, the ordinance 17.82 on conditional use permits, which 17.82.030 provides for conditions that can be attached to the resolution. And it does indicate that conditions of project approval are limited to those measures or requirements that are necessary to reduce or eliminate potential environmental effects or protect the public health, safety, and welfare. And I think what my main concern here is that we stress the county's concern about the hazards of wildfire, particularly wildfire that can be associated with its ignition from transmission of power lines, or power line transmission. And that's what has led me to suggest the condition that you all have before you and that I read earlier. Now, people might ask, well, why not go back and issue a new CECL statement? Well, I think, as I believe Commissioner Wooster's questions to the objector has pointed out, it's, that's not available to us now. An EIR has been certified, a negative declaration has been adopted, and no subsequent EIR shall be prepared unless certain things have come to light. There, one of them is substantial changes are proposed in the project, and there's nothing in there that's changing anything about the connection of transmission lines, except they're becoming from a different direction on the parcel. Then the next possible thing is substantial changes occur with respect to the circumstances under which the project is undertaken, which would require major revisions of the previous EIR. Do the involvement of new significant environmental effects or substantial increase in the severity of previously identified effects? Anybody living in a county that was subjected to Butte Fire is well aware of the environmental effects and the severity of wildfires that are caused by transmission lines. So this is certainly not something that has arisen since the 2017 approval. And the third category is new information of substantial importance, which was not known and could not have been known with the exercise of reasonable diligence at the time the previous EIR was certified or the negative declarations were adopted, that shows any of the following. I don't need to go into any of the following things because there's no new information here. We have the threat of wildfire. It was very clear at the time of the 2017 adoption. And so there's certainly nothing that would give us the ability to, to go back and enter into new EIRs or studies or negative declarations. So, that's, we have the authority to give, put this condition in. I propose that we do put this condition in. The applicant has agreed that it can be included, and I would, when we get to the resolution, I will propose that it be added.
Commissioner Ladish, just for clarity, I'm curious as to, to what that, what that will actually look like from our end. So what are we looking for in terms of verification? Is it a letter from PG&E?
I'd say.
Just a general statement from the applicant?
I think, although a full exposition would be, the applicant's going to say, we've contracted with PG&E. What we're going to do is underground the lines? Well, that wouldn't be good. The connection, the wooded roadway is actually going to be cleared on both sides by 30 feet if we're doing the lines down there, you know.
I think what she's asking for is who's the authority to review this and what will be the conditions for it and not.
I think.
See, because validation of a permit requires some verification that the conditions have been completed. So, if Public Works Conditions Road Improvements, we get a memo from Public Works that says all the conditions have been met. So, what is this going to look like from our standpoint?
Similar to the requirement that the, that environmental health requires the, what is it called? A material, hazardous material business plan. This will be satisfied if you believe that the applicant has made a full exposition. In other words, has provided a transmission line safety plan to you.
To us?
This, the way I have, I'm putting this condition in the planning commission conditions.
So we're supposed to review the plan and determine that he's in compliance?
Right. So who is the authority again?
His compliance is full exposition. It's not, you're not, you're not, you're not going to be saying, no, you have to add more safety issues if you are satisfied that he has fully, or the applicant has fully told you what the plans are and verifies that they're consistent with the state requirements.
Well, if I could jump in here.
Please.
We learned today that PG&E is going to put in the line.
Yeah.
The applicant's not going to put in the line. What this requires is the applicant to provide a full exposition of its plans, but it won't be its plans.
Its plan is to contract.
Regarding electrical transmission safety. I don't know if the applicant has to come up with any plans because PG&E is doing it. And the applicant have to verify that to the point of in connect, there should be full compliance. Well, there's supposed to be full compliance with all state statutes, regulations, and guidelines anyway. And so I don't think this proposed new condition is necessary. And I can see it could be troublesome because there's a disconnect between who's subject to the condition and who's actually responsible on the ground for doing the work.
No, I think if the applicant makes it clear that he's contracting with PG&E and the plan is to do this sort of transmission, I think it's essential that the county shows its concern about the hazards from power lines. I think hazards from power lines are very, very clear. Now, this wasn't included in the, in the previous, previous documents, but that does not bar the county providing its clear indication that the county is concerned about this issue and that, I mean, applicant of its plans, its plans can include contracting with PG&E, and the PG&E is going to be doing this and that and the other thing, and verifying the full compliance of the statute. I think for the protection of the county, I think this is important. Because otherwise, what, where are we expressing any concern about this?
You just did.
Officially non-record.
So, I think all of us agree that we're very concerned about wildfire safety. I think the confusion here is in what we can ask them to do, that we can then adequately review not being experts in this and not having that county agency that we can refer this to. We could say HealthArc could look at it, but I don't. Unfortunately, PG&E is the expert, and PG&E is the person doing the work. And PG&E has already demonstrated to us both their concern for wildfire safety and what sort of proactive measures they're going to be taking. So, I'm just not sure that we are, what we're achieving with this particular condition, although I would love to put something in there that would make me feel good about, about it. It would make me feel that we're requiring them to do something above and beyond the minimum. I just don't know what that would be.
I think this is an assurance that they are at least doing what's required.
They have, they have, it would be PG&E that they're contracted with, to connect.
And they have pretty clear guidelines on how to install your setbacks, how much has to be cleared.
And we've seen how that's worked.
I understand that, but I don't believe that's for new construction. That's maintenance down the road where we have issues.
If the consensus of the commission is.
Let's pull the commissioners. Commissioner Henderson, would you like to see an additional condition added to the resolution?
I believe it's necessary. I'll avoid this.
I don't think we need it.
I really think we need it.
Are there other items within the resolution that we need to discuss?
Well, I had a bunch of typos and so forth.
Yeah, me too. Hold on, I'm nervous.
I don't know if they got fixed or not.
Is there anything of substance?
No, I don't think I have anything of substance, other than, of course, we would add the new Exhibit A that contains the mitigation measure 12-1 regarding noise levels.
I have a question under number, finding number three. The evidence says subject property is 13 acres in size. The project will encumber less than half of the overall parcel. And it looks to me from the diagrams that when you consider the storage of the wood and the chips and the buildings, why it's encumbering certainly most of the parcel. and the chips and the buildings, why it's encumbering certainly most of the parcel.
I don't think so, but parcel looks pretty big.
So are you including the access road encircling the facilities?
I would just think, well, maybe you can.
Isn't this entire thing the parcel? We're only talking about this.
Oh, okay. I'm just an educator.
No, it's because the Exhibit B doesn't show the entire parcel.
I was looking, I was looking at what you were showing.
Because we kept seeing a parcel. Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anything else?
And we're assuming the typos are going to be taken out.
Yes. Commas and yeses and those and yeah.
Madeline, were my typos and minor changes included?
In this? No, because this was already, your suggestions were given to me after this already went out.
Shall I go through them then?
Go ahead. Let's do a review.
Okay, there's not that many. Okay, page one, forced whereas clause, third line where it speaks of for the construction and operation A community scale, put it out before the A. Last whereas clause, third line, limited staff report, should be limited to its staff Top of page two, first line, the sentence is, none of the factors described in CEQA guideline 15162 are present, should be is present. Page three, and this one is not exactly a typo, but it's not a substantial one either. How about halfway down the full paragraph on page three at the top? There's a sentence after PG&E and says, the only difference between the former and current project proposal is that the proposed locations of the heavy equipment that's in the stored wood chips on the project site would be switched. It's not the heavy equipment, it's the facility infrastructures, facility structures. And the same change with the next sentence, however, the footprint for the project remains the same, the project does not change in size or scope, and this reconfiguration of the equipment should be, the facility structure and storage area within the footprint would not increase and so forth. Last sentence, no new information or substantial changes has been identified, has to be have because it's changes. Page four, paragraph three, two-thirds down, it says, parking is the PS zone, should be parking in the PS zone. Paragraph four, under evidence, first line, it reads, the subject parcel is surrounded by parcels pertaining to the, strike the second's the, or either one.
You missed one.
No.
You did. I'm so excited.
I'm sorry. Tell me if I'm wrong, I'm going to just quick look, but on page four, going back to the evidence under number three, after the change that Commissioner Wooster made where it says parking in the PS zone, it should be is per the approved development plan. Sorry.
I think I'll lose their way on that one.
I stand mortified. Okay, now I had one other, one other suggestion. And that's on page five, paragraph six. Well, actually, two things. The very last line or sentence there says, mitigation monitoring and reporting crowbound, et cetera, et cetera, are attached as Exhibits A and B respectively, and incorporating, incorporating should be incorporated. And then the other, the other thing that struck me was, the paragraph has to do with the conditions of project approval. But you get about three sentences down, here's a, there's a sentence that starts, in addition, an initial study was prepared and so forth. And then that goes into the initial study of the NMD and site plan and so forth.
Different thought.
And it's a different thought, and it occurred to me that it would make more sense to move that entire section, strike the word in addition and start the initial study. And move it over to page one, the very first paragraph at the bottom that says, the addendum to the 2017 initial study, et cetera, complies with the requirements of CEQA. And this is the first place this has been mentioned, and it kind of comes out of the blue. But if you move that section I was just thinking about on page four, right there. So it starts, an additional study was prepared and then continue on with it. It all kind of hangs together the way I think it should.
I agree, it's a separate thought, and I think reordering it might make sense.
Does the department have any problem with that?
No, it's just that was, you're adding it to the finding, correct? Not the evidence.
I'm fine with making it just a separate piece of evidence.
Separate piece of evidence.
Yeah, that would be fine too.
Back under number one.
I think Madeline's right about that.
So it would be the evidence, paragraph one would be what you're moving, and then evidence paragraph two, or just the second paragraph would be?
The second paragraph under one, I would say.
Yeah, but I mean, you have the finding number one paragraph. Where would your insert be? Is it going to be in that finding paragraph or is it going to be in evidence?
This, the thoughts that are in that paragraph on page five are, in my judgment, evidence.
You could just do a second evidence paragraph.
You could do a second evidence paragraph.
And have what you're moving as the first evidence paragraph?
Yes, I think it should be, I think it flows better that way.
Yeah.
I think so too.
Can you clarify that one more time? I'm sorry.
Is it designed, well, it's yours. What I'm, what I think we're saying is that the evidence under number six, starting with the words in addition, which would be taken out. The rest, the entire rest of that paragraph would become the first paragraph of evidence under finding number one.
Okay.
Any other marks on?
That's all I had.
Oh, I just, I'm sorry, one, under general conditions, condition one dash two, this conditional use permit will expire if not validated prior to December 31, 2022. To activate this permit, are those terms synonymous or validate and activate? It sounds like two of them.
Yeah, validation is, is a verification that all the conditions have been met, therefore the permit is then activated.
Okay, so it is two, two things.
Yes, I think that's, yes, I think that's just the way it's put in code.
One more.
Yeah, it's verbatim from code.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. And we have our new mitigation monitoring and reporting program sheet in there, and we are, I believe, ready to hear a recommendation. Are we?
Very.
Very, okay.
Okay. Staff recommends the Planning Commission approve Resolution 2021-020 as amended, adopting the CEQA addendum and the mitigation monitoring and reporting program, and approving conditional use permit 2020-074 for Blue Mountain Electric for the construction and operation of a community scale three-megawatt biomass combined heat and power facility based on the findings and conditions contained therein.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Passes five zero.
And this item is going to be final, if not appealed, to the Board of Supervisors within 15 calendar days.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Senator.
I think that we will take a break until one o'clock, when we will reconvene to hear Okay, so Planning Commission's back in session, and now I don't have my agenda out, so, for the continuation of our informational item on the greenhouse gas emission inventories and background report. And who's going to start here?
I'll just kind of give you a little recap. So, not that everyone doesn't know, but on October 14th, we opened this item and began discussion regarding greenhouse gas emissions inventory and the reduction plan. Our county council, Calvers County Council of Governments and the consultants presented this to you as an informational item, although you, the commission, does have discretion. And it is necessary that we have your acceptance of the documents in order to move forward with the next phase of our plan. We did have a robust discussion, ending the meeting with a lot of questions and concerns by you. Because of this, we obviously determined that we needed to continue the meeting to today. And upon request, you were so kind to forward your edits and concerns and comments that you were planning on discussing today with the COG and the consultants. So they have received those suggested concerns and edits. And so we will go ahead and open our discussion and kick that off, continuing on today. One thing that we are kind of concerned about and we kind of need direction from you is if there's a consensus with the commission that we need to go forward using a different methodology, or if we are perhaps planning on using the methodology as currently revised and suggested by COG and the consultants. And just to get direction as to where we're going.
Great. Thank you. Somebody want to get, do our consultants have anything they want to offer before we get started?
Yeah, this is, this is Amber. Thank you again, Commissioner, for letting us come back and continue this discussion. Our consultants do have prepared, we can kind of give you an overview of what sections in the report will be updated based off of previous comments. We can give you a summary of that if you would like. And then, I know we've received a number of discussion items from a couple commissioners, and it's up to you if you would like, the commission would like to lead that discussion or if you would like us to kind of walk through some of those discussion items.
Seems to me if they have, if they have a presentation they would like to make, it might take care of some of our questions.
Please turn your mics on.
Whoa.
Whoops.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I don't know if you could hear what I wasn't saying there, but yeah, it seems to me that if the consultants have a presentation that they're ready to make now, it might take care of some of the questions we might ask later, so.
Bring it up to speed on what decisions or edits you're already suggesting.
Sounds good, we can do that. Sherry?
Yeah, definitely. So we don't have an official presentation. We did draft up a document since there were some very detailed questions, and we thought it might be easier to draft up some of those responses, and some responses will go verbally during the meeting. But why don't we start by sharing that document? We also emailed it out before the meeting, so it's something that can be shared after the meeting, but we can start by pulling it up on the screen. Meredith, would it be okay for us to have Meredith share her screen so she can pull up the document?
Sure.
And since Meredith wasn't here at the last Planning Commission meeting, again, hello, commissioners, my name is Sherry Howe. I'm with the CIO Business Council, and I'd also like to introduce my colleague, Meredith Anderson, who worked on the GHG inventory. Okay, is it up yet or still working on it? It looks like great. Okay. Great, can everyone see that?
Can we see that?
Should we make it super large? Okay, why don't we zoom in as much as possible? I think you're gonna, yeah, yes, you might want to do that. And then center it if you can, Meredith, because it seems like we can't get it all on the screen.
Sherry and Meredith, I don't know if you got my email, but we're missing one of our panelists that don't seem to have the Zoom meeting invite.
Um, let's see.
Andrew Beecher, that doesn't have a Zoom panelist in there.
Amber, Gina, is that something we can fix to get one of our panelists on? I think you didn't get the Zoom link.
Yes, who is it?
What's the name?
Andrew Beecher, do you need the email address?
Yes, please.
Kelsey, do you have that readily available?
I'll chat it to you in a.
Thank you.
Oh, good.
So you chat it, okay.
Thank you.
Use your ability to pop it.
Excellent, yes. Is that large enough? Should we make it larger or is that not visible?
I can read it.
Okay. Okay, great. So we just wanted to start with the updates that we have made to the report. Any minor grammatical errors that were sent in were definitely adjusted and corrected. So that's the first two bullets. We did add clarity about the vehicle miles traveled, VMT allocations, that is 50/50, 100% if it's traveling in, 50% if it's through halfway from another location. So that language was added to the report in the community-wide transportation section. We did add clarity regarding where data is specified versus when it's modeled and scaled. So that was added to the both community-wide and government operations sections. And we added where we attempted data gathering and showcased all the avenues that were tried to determine data specific when possible and if not extrapolated when, as an alternative. So that language was also added to the community-wide and government operations sections. So delving in, and that was from the first meeting, from discussion items that were definitively resolved, and there were ongoing items that I think are continually touched on in the. And there were ongoing items that I think are continually touched on in the questions that we received before this meeting. So, we're going to skim down, just to find out, did all the commissioners get all these questions, or is this only known to the specific commissioners who submitted them?
They just got a copy of the Tim Whittish comments.
Got it.
And by the way, if you want to give a definitive answer of compare, what the current accepted comparison between methane's global warming effects and CO2, you don't have to answer or quote all of my questions. You can just cut to the chase and say, oh, this is the answer. That would make things a lot faster.
Okay, so if we scroll down, and definitely let us know if we do need to discuss this further instead of just jumping right to the answer, but, and Tim, let me know if I'm not summarizing your questions, or if we're not adequately addressing it. But the first question was in regards to the IPCC assessment. There is using global warming potential 20 versus 100 years, and then there's the sixth assessment, too, that recently came out. So to start with one question, to use global warming, the global warming potential 20-year time horizon for methane versus the 100-year horizon. Current standard protocol from the US Community Protocol references the 100-year global warming potential value. They reference it, it's because it's the most commonly used practice, so it's very standard practice to use the 100-time stamp value. However, Calveras County can choose to deviate from the standard practice and adopt a different global warming potential time horizon value. Some communities, some progressive communities are choosing to start using the 20-year methane global warming potential value because it can more accurately account for the short-lived nature of methane, in which case, again, Calveras County could elect to change that value, adopt the 20-year, which would alter the methane values to 80 instead of the current 28. So this would increase the GHG emissions methane sources by roughly threefold. And it'll also trigger a budget addition to redo the entire inventory. The reason why it would have to be redone is because you're not just changing the methane, and methane is in a lot of different sectors, so it would affect most of them. But you should be keeping the 20-year consistent GWP value consistent, so you would be changing it for all of the equivalent emissions that we are accounting for. So the entire report would be altered by this change if selected to do so. It would also mean that it would take, maybe push back the Phase 1 timeline closeout by two, three months. So we would start Phase 2 a bit later, and that's to account for timing to, because we have a lot of other projects going on right now, so just to finish updating these changes as well as account for holiday time, and then running it by the Planning Commission and the Board of Supervisors. So, we did include some numbers down below, too, just so you have them for reference. The IPCC sixth assessment, what it does is it breaks out fossil fuel methane from non-fossil fuel methane, but you can see the values aren't too different from each other. So the 20-year is 82.5 for fossil fuel, 80.8 for non-fossil fuel, and the 100 AR or sixth assessment values are roughly the same as the fifth assessment values. So we just wanted to give you the values there for reference. We're also, we're going to be addressing the sixth assessment in the next part of the question. So I wanted to see, were there any questions first about, I know the concerns that were brought up in the last one is methane's a short-lived gas, so should we account for it accordingly? So if you want to account for it accordingly, Calveras County can deviate from the standard practice and decide to use the 20-year time horizon GWP values.
I remember from last time, your group was indicating that there are values to sticking with the crowd for now, but maybe having a footnote indicating the current indications and that perhaps things would change during the course of the application of our actual reduction. Is that still a possible alternative?
We can put a footnote in there, and so why don't we talk about the sixth assessment next, unless, were there any other discussion items on the 20-year GWP option?
It seems like it would be prudent of us to stick with the 100-year and follow the crowd.
Well, I have a question. Does this 80.8 factor, is that used the same way as the factor of 28 that's under the AR number five? In other words, does it substitute for 28?
No, it's the difference between the 100-year time horizon for global warming potential and the 20-year. So the 100-year value is 28, the 20-year value is 80, in the 80s.
All right. Are you assuming constant emissions as opposed to emissions that are increasing over time?
I have to admit, this isn't a science that the consultants, we apply these, so this is something that IPCC is determining. So they determine the difference between the 20 and 100-year. But again, the science of that is the scientists at IPCC, not us consultants who pull together the GHG inventory. So I apologize, I'm not sure I know the answer to that question.
Well, the problem I'm having is, what you're using is GWP 100, that takes you out to 100 years, and nobody I don't think is going to want to wait 100 years to see the results of whatever we're going to do comes to fruition. And so, and what's happening is, if you look at a constant emissions over a 20-year period, which is much closer to the horizon we have to work with, what's happening is, according to AR 6, is when you use GWT 100, you're overstating the effect of these constant methane emissions by a factor of three to four. And that's not the only place where that's stated. And so what happens then is, we're overstating, we're overstating the emissions that are taking place over a 20-year period, which is a relevant period.
Well, actually, understating.
Maybe we don't have an alternative, maybe we have to go with the overstating, I don't know, is a practical matter.
But I thought GWP 100 by itself is 100.
It is.
The sixth assessment itself distinguishes between one-off pulses and step changes, and gives rise to my question as far as the, from the paragraph we were looking at last time, it distinguishes constant methane emissions from new methane emission sources. And I think what Commissioner Wooster's getting at is, he pictures new methane sources would be an increase in the number of methane-producing animals would be a new methane source, or new methane emission. And I, in order for this to make sense, I'm thinking that maybe they're talking about new breaths. The cow continues to breathe methane, oh, look at that, that's a new methane source for them. I take it you can't clarify for us what their scientists are talking about?
So if you don't mind, I can interject a little bit here.
Please.
We're doing, we're using these numbers in two different ways effectively. Me, in the climate planning practice, take annualized emissions from one snapshot at a time, determine how much is being produced. IPCC is looking at the lifespan of the emissions over a timeframe. So we're just basically normalizing the emissions from three different greenhouse gases to develop one single factor of CO2 equivalent. So we can see a total number of CO2 equivalent that's being generated in one year from three different greenhouse gases that are being produced in Calveras County. So, we are not ever looking at it and projecting what that emission being generated in year one looks like in year 20. We're following a different methodology than that of IPCC. So, we're strictly looking to say, how much CO2, or how much global warming potential does methane have when compared to CO2, and that's why we use the GWP, not to project global warming impacts over a 20 or 100-year timeframe.
So it's to create something that we can compare against in the future by using a similar formula to come up with a comparative number that's hopefully going down?
Well, this all has to do with translating, if you will, methane emissions into CO2 equivalents. And I just can't get over the hump that when you're using GWP instead of GWP*, you're overstating it by a factor of three to four if it's constant emissions. And it doesn't say no new emissions, it says constant emissions. Said no new emissions in AR 6, it would have said so. I, you know, I don't think we can afford to spend a whole lot of time on this, and we may have to come back to it later.
One suggestion I made was that we could just have a footnote that indicates, this is on page 2 of my thing, should a footnote be added to Table 1 indicating that under the 2021 standards applied by the sixth assessment, the Calaveras inventory drafts Table 1 understates methane's damaging effect, and then quoting from Page 123 of Chapter 7 of the sixth assessment, where it says cumulative emissions, and they're speaking of methane, using GTP 100 consistently underestimate the warming. That seems like a very clear statement that is consistent with the 80, 82, whatever figures that you were giving us. I know the Commissioner Wooster thinks that that's a bad interpretation of the rest of the, but that's a possibility for the footnote for this point.
Yeah, so actually, since you folks are bringing up IPCC, the sixth assessment, we did want to address that, too. So, the timing of this is what is unique. So we actually completed the inventory section of the report before IPCC released their sixth assessment. We didn't know when it was going to be released, and timing like that sometimes happens, but the inventory had already been completed at that point. It does happen that the timing, did happen that we presented to the Planning Commission by the time the IPCC sixth assessment was released. But also, when those assessments are released, it does take time for it to be processed and then adopted, so it hasn't officially been adopted by most users yet. And we use ICLI's ClearPath tools to devise our GHG inventory, and we asked them when they would be fully adopting the sixth assessment, and they had mentioned likely not until early 2022. So, again, this is a timing thing. You could also say the inventory is for 2018, and in 2018, the sixth assessment was not out. But also, it's more unique that we're kind of straddling it right now, because it happened to be that we completed the inventory before the sixth assessment was released, and technically that sixth assessment won't be adopted by the tools we use to devise GHG inventories until early next year. So we could, again, the county could decide to want to use the sixth assessment. If you decided to do that, though, that would trigger a budget adjustment, because we would have to redo the inventory to be meeting the sixth assessment changes. It would push back the Phase 2 timeline, and it may really result in minimal changes. So if you're still sticking with the 100-time horizon, 100-year time horizon for GWP, there isn't that much difference between the AR 6 and the, sorry, sixth assessment and the fifth assessment of IPCC report. So, we could wait, but you probably wouldn't see too much difference. The main difference would be, is if you decide to adopt the 20-year time horizon for methane for the GWP. So that was the, that was an update with the sixth assessment. And then I noticed, so the next question ends up talking about the time, so instead of using global warming potential, I think it's the global temperature potential, temperature change potential. We are a little confused by this statement, because you can't divide the global temperature potential by the global warming potential, they're not equivalent values. We have a definition there of what the GWP versus.
You can stop right there, it was my question, if it doesn't, it didn't make any sense to me.
Okay, great. And we didn't find any indication in the IPCC that it favored the GTP over GWP. However, if it did clearly say and recommend that that change be made, then again, ICLI would adopt that, and we would see that change in the ClearPath tool. But since that change has not been noted, we haven't seen any difference with that, if that answers our question.
Did you see any table or narrative in the AR 6 that compared the GWP* with the GWP-100? Because they mentioned it along with the CGTP as being, you know, the wave of the future, but then I didn't see where they ever applied the GWP*.
Was the star, I'm not sure what the asterix meant.
I think somebody was referring to a GWP*. I may be quoting Commissioner Wooster as my authority.
I did, I don't see that in the table. Yes, I'm not too sure what the GWP* is.
Okay, okay. I was thinking that might be a better comparison than the CGTP, but then they don't make the comparison. Okay, I don't want to take more time.
Okay.
There is no perfect solution to the two that we're trying to create a single factor that reflects components that have different lifespans. So, I think we just have to pick something and keep moving, so long as in the future we're tracking it, and we need to make a change to be able to keep doing comparisons, we're able to do that. Doesn't seem like there's a lot of benefit today in changing from the trajectory that your background report has been based on.
I think with a footnote, I fully agree.
Well, I'm not sure the footnote is talking about methane.
I think we can talk about the footnote as a separate thing. I'm just trying to get, it seems clear that that would be the preference of our consultants, because that keeps us in the mainstream. Is that true?
Yes, I think we would recommend that you stay with standard practices, and that way it's easily transparent about why you're following this. We could add a footnote that explains that the AR IPCC sixth assessment came out during this timeframe, but we are staying with the fifth assessment, because that was a timeframe by which we had completed the inventory, if that adds any clarity.
I think that plus the. I think that plus that it is still a standard practice, the IPCC fifth assessment is the standard practice, subject to change in the future when the comparisons are clarified, I guess, something like that.
I'm sure they'll have some way that they will translate those into a new template at some point, but for right now, okay.
I think as a practical matter, that's the only real way we can go.
Yeah, I agree, you guys, but I'm sure we have other questions coming, so carry on.
Okay, great. So then there were additional questions. We just wanted to note all the minor typos. I think we had noticed in the beginning, but since it's in order of the questions that we received, that those were corrected. And then I think there are specific questions regarding Appendix N, which is the Wildfire Assessment Report, so I will turn that over to the Ringcon team. And Meredith, you might need to scroll down a little farther on the screen. Thanks. Eric, Kelsey, do we still have you on the phone? Or Andrew, were you able to join?
Andrew, here's the Ringcon.
Oh, great, excellent, thank you.
Thanks, everyone, for having us here today to discuss these items. So just want to make sure that I am looking at the same items. Okay, so for going through these responses, I understand a number of these things were a couple errors, and appreciate your comments on those, so we went through and are editing those things. And so for this first item, looking at the title, this is correct. So since this is an attachment to the inventory, we will rename it as the Greenhouse Gas Emissions Inventory Report, and then it will be the Appendix N to that and not the actual Greenhouse Gas Emissions Reduction Plan. If that's a okay solution for that first one.
Thank you.
All right, no comments, I'll keep moving forward. So there is, apologies, apologies, I want to make sure I have the right notes that I'm looking at going through this. So next one, Section 2 of Appendix N deals with natural working lands, but the table, it says only natural lands are listed in that table. We went ahead and edited that table, and we're happy to add a footnote saying that the croplands that are in there are intended to be working lands, but they're just not called out specifically because those are the specific working lands that we're working with in that inventory report. So we will, our intent is to leave the text saying croplands, but then add a footnote to it indicating that these are referring to the working lands as part of the natural working lands inventory. Okay, apologies, looking at my other screen, but moving forward, we are looking at, okay, so the, this one is a little bit about the data sets that we went through. Question was the number of cannabis plants certainly increased, and should it be included as cultivated crops in these tables? Really, what we, we don't have a data set that can disaggregate what the crop types are for this specific analysis. The analysis that, this has used this analysis, it's the Landfire data set, and that's developed by the U.S. Department of Agriculture Forest Service and the U.S. Department of the Interior, and it's based on spatial satellite data and does not disaggregate crop types. This is the best available data to be used for this type of analysis, and it is consistent with what the California Resources Board uses for these purposes. So looking at the actual, if we're talking about, you know, the different crop types versus the agricultural emissions inventory, those are two different data sets there for the agricultural inventory. We use the specific Calaveras County crop reports to derive that data. However, again, we're looking at different categorizations of lands from different data sets. At this point, there really isn't a method for determining the specific crop lands in this spatial data set, although that...
If I could interrupt you for a second.
Of course, of course.
Is it fair to say that this is dealing from aerial shots, and they're picking out areas that where crops were being grown, they weren't differentiating? So I would assume if that's the case, that cannabis was included in this figure.
Right. They're not going to add anything here, Andrew, but just, so I think we talked about this a little bit last time, but just as a fun reminder, that this is data derived from the Calaveras County-specific agricultural crop report, and that most recent county-specific crop report did not specify the presence of any cannabis specifically under crop production. So I just wanted to say that for consistency with your county crop report, that is why that is not appearing in the inventory.
Commissioner, but I believe you were on the right pathway. Thank you, Kelsey, for the clarification, but Commissioner, you're on the right pathway. Exactly, you know, they're looking at area geospatial data sets, so it is most likely that if there is cultivated land in there, it is being categorized as croplands. So if they're looking at cannabis cultivation, it would also be considered as croplands in there.
Thanks.
Great, if there's no more questions on that, keep moving along. So this is talking about the surprising large increase calculated for the land coverage and carbon stocks of evergreen forests in Calaveras County between 2010 and 2020. Yes, we went back and reviewed the report and reviewed data, and this is correct, and this is using spatial satellite data, and this land coverage is determined by, the land coverage that we're putting in the report is determined by that geospatial data set through the Landfire data program.
It's funny because it just, in my heart, I know it's wrong. You know, I mean, we're not, we haven't covered ourselves with evergreen forests, and if anything, they're thinner and they've been more harvested than they were in 2010. So what do you do when you have this methodology that is wrong? I mean, I think anybody in Calaveras County would say this is ridiculous. We did not increase our evergreen forest by hundreds of percentage points.
That is fair, due to these data sets. You know, these are, not every single data point on here is ground truth. There is some degree of ground truthing that is done, but, you know, if we're looking at this expansive data set that's covering the entire state, they're really just using it as aerial imagery. So there is potential that this data set does have certain artifacts in it that, at this point, we really just don't have a way of reconciling. It's, you know, it's methodology and data that's used by, developed by U.S. Department of Agriculture Forest Service, and it's used by the California Air Resources Board. So at this point, it's really just the best we have, and outside of using this data set, it would require us to go out and ground truth these measurements, which is outside of the work scope for us for this report.
Okay, it just kind of casts a pall on the believability of the other data that you're receiving from these sources. If that's that wrong, how do we believe the crops? You know, I guess that's the best source you have available to you as to these figures.
Well, and I guess, Andrew, is there maybe another explanation why carbon stock maybe has increased even though on the ground we feel like, okay, yeah, we're cutting down trees because we've had dead and dying trees up in Arnold in the higher country, but it's, you know, our fuels have been increasing. So is there another explanation as to why the land coverage and carbon stock could have increased even though we feel like we're losing trees?
Right, and so, yeah, thank you, Amber. Yeah, so it really goes, the way that we calculate that carbon stock is based on the vegetation type, the vegetation height, and the cover based off these data sets, and then based on other factors that are provided by the California Air Resource Board. And so it is possible that even though in these areas, it could be that there just was a different categorization of the land use type between the 2010 and 2020 data set, and also it could be that there was an increase in vegetation height or an accumulation of vegetation, if there wasn't fuel clearing or significant fires that went through in that area.
Well, if there's a difference in how these things are being measured, I think that ought to be made clear in the footnote because I have to agree with Commissioner Lattish on its face, this does not seem right. In fact, it seems really off.
Well, unfortunately for us with the scope of work that we have, the only way to validate that perspective would be to go out into the field and do an assessment of the actual timber stocks or the land cover in areas. This is the standardized data that's used by the state of California for this type of work, and so with, other than going out and doing that check, we can't, we can't say any...
As I understand, Commissioner Wooster's point is that if there was a change in how this was measured between 2010 and 2020, that ought to be stated, at least would provide...
No, there isn't a change, there wasn't a change. It's a, the geospatial data is done on a 30 by 30-meter effectively, and then that pixel gets categorized by the, by the program as a specific type of land cover. So if there was significant buy-off in one area, and there could, the computer program could be categorizing that pixel at one time an evergreen forest, but in the subsequent time as a, you know, grassland, and that's where you would get the change. It's not a methodology change, it's an imagery change.
And thank you, Eric. And one thing I'd like to point out about the Evergreen Forest specifically, just the scale that we're looking at with the total acreage that's covered by this data set in Calaveras County, the Evergreen Forest comprises in 2020, after, you know, we're looking at this increase, it still only comprises 1.5% of the total land acreage in the county. So it really ends up being a small contribution to the total carbon stocks and total vegetation types in the county.
The problem is, is the believability suffers, but please go ahead. I think you've answered what you can.
No, no, thank you, and these are good points, appreciate your comments. So moving forward, power land burned in the 2015 Butte Fire accounted for in those tables 2 and 3. So we have, you know, done some further looking at the data to address this, and so, you know, again, we're looking at this geospatial data set derived from satellite imagery from land fire. What we're looking at, again, is with this data set, is the vegetation type, the vegetation height, and coverage across the county. So on review of the data set, it indicates that the area where the Butte Fire burned did not have a change in the vegetation type classification between 2010 and 2020. And so we're looking at these snapshots in a 10-year period, and the Butte Fire landed right in the middle of it, and the data set just really doesn't have the resolution, it's only a 30 by 30-meter square, and so we can't really tell the actual conditions of vegetation there outside of the type and height. So standing in that standing but dead trees will still be considered as carbon stored in natural lands. However, we cannot, we're just not able to view things on a single tree level, and to do that, that would again require physical surveys, which we're just outside of the scope of what we're doing here. All right, there's no more questions about that one, we'll keep moving forward. Just feel free to interrupt me and stop me, I'll just keep moving forward. Okay, so this one's explaining how reduction in biomass stock, as with mixed forest, is tied to an increase in biomass carbon density. So looking at Table 5 specifically, when we're talking about that biomass carbon density, we're really looking at the average accumulation of biomass in a single acre for that specific land use vegetation type. So it appears that there were changes in the land cover types across the county between 2010 and 2020, and therefore the area of mixed forest actually decreased. However, what we're seeing is those areas that remained actually had a net increase in biomass on a per acre basis. And again, what we're looking at there is just the amount of carbon on a specific acre, so it's really the density of biomass there. And it's not really related to the total amount, like, or the total area of biomass that's in the county. And so again, from the data sets that we're using, we can attribute this to an increase in the amount or height of vegetation within that, those acres of mixed forest. And again, you know, this is determined from that land fire data set, which is geospatial satellite data. All right, no other questions, we'll keep moving forward. So this is related to the fire districts. I believe we mentioned previously in the last meeting that the final copy of the report was not included, so we, that has been updated, and it does indicate that there are many fire districts within Calaveras County. And so I think that covers those next two questions that has been updated and corrected in the report. Appreciate you pointing that out. Again, for page, the next one, underwater systems, we went ahead and made those corrections indicating that there are several utilities, and we went and outlined those agencies within the report just to provide that more depth of what the actual conditions are there. Okay, looking at, if there's no questions there, the next one is discussing the Stanislaw Forest. So the figure of 898,099 acres, we didn't find reference to that in the final report. However, we have confirmed that it's in the report, we have a 150,000-acre number for commercial forest lands in the final report, and we have confirmed that that 250,000 acres is the total in Stanislaw's National Forest, and we have indicated in the report that part of this is within Calaveras County, and it's not fully encompassed within Calaveras County. And I believe that's the clarification that you're looking for there, so I hope that addresses that question.
Yeah, that's great.
Perfect, thank you. Okay, so looking at cannabis, we did include in the report indicating that it is a crop resource, under the crop resources. We don't have data at this time based on the acreage or production value of cannabis because the figures that we had pulled for walnuts and wine, that is pulled from the county crop reports, and we just weren't able to find cannabis data in there, but we did indicate that cannabis is also a crop resource within the county.
I didn't understand your last statement. Is there some...
Oh, sorry, we just added text within the report indicating that cannabis is a crop resource within Calaveras County.
But not appearing in the table.
Right, yeah, we just didn't have data on the acreage or...
Right, right, thank you.
...resources. Okay, page 35, yes, error, reference source not found, that has been corrected. Thank you for pointing that out. All right, I think this next one also points to the comment about the fire districts, and we have included in there that we updated the text to say that, we've updated with the requested text closely watched by the Calaveras Consolidated Fire Protection District, local fire departments, and districts in California. So we have that clarification.
Thank you.
No problem? Again, this one, page 40, we went ahead and added that clarification text in there that it's not, we are completely clear... it's not, we are completely cleared. It is, we added the type of, oh, I'm sorry. Maybe I skipped that one. Completely clear, description's inconsistent. Oh, yeah, exactly. We added that clarification text that you suggested in there instead of saying completely cleared.
Okay, great.
And then again, the next one is similar. Added that clarification text that you have, in addition, maintaining 100-foot defensible space buffer around building structures, fire-prone areas, and referencing the section of the California Public Resources Code. That's your question.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you. Appreciate it. And I think now we'll, moving on to transportation.
Yeah.
Sherry, take that over.
Yeah, thanks, Andrew. I will say, we, I'm super impressed with the level of detail. I, I've been joking that this planning commission doesn't just do your homework, you guys go and do the extra credit as well. So the next comments, I think, were from Kelly Wooster. And the first one started with transportation. The, and please, I have to admit, we weren't sure if some of these were questions. And so the first one, we weren't sure what you wanted, whether, whether there was a change requested from the travel demand model. Do you have an exact question for the first point?
Yeah, the questions are, what data goes into that model? And how does it get translated to vehicle miles traveled?
So more clarification in the report to state that the data was pulled from cellphone use data and then...
I think, Sherry, we can provide an explanation of, in more detail, on the travel demand model. Their, um, travel demand model was developed using Federal Highway Administration guidelines. And there's, we have a huge binder report on how that doc, the demand model has been calibrated and validated. So we can try to maybe provide a footnote in it and maybe a link to that entire document if that would be helpful.
Yes.
Would that suffice?
How does, how does a cellphone data, how does that work into this? And what happens when, for example, Verizon changes from a, what do they call it, a grade three to a grade four? And then you have no more cellphone service on the east end of the county?
So the street light is a data set that they do, I believe, use cellphone data. That was used to validate the VMT going into and out of the county and what zones they're coming from and going to into and out of the county and through the county. Because we wanted to verify and see the VMT going through the county because we don't, we want to take that out of our calculations of VMT. We only want to consider VMT that's produced and generated from within the county. If that helps.
Now, on that, that same subject, do, does that calculate miles for each cellphone in the vehicle? Or is it just taking account one cellphone in the vehicle?
It, it's just one, one vehicle. So it, it doesn't track each individual...
It's tracking cellphones. So if there's multiple cellphones in the vehicle, it could skew the, the data, correct?
I understand. I, to be honest, I don't know the technicalities between, behind street light. But I do know they're not accounting for, you know, five people per vehicle. That would obviously be overstating and overcounting the, the VMT.
Getting back to what I think Commissioner Wooster was getting at, there are many areas in the county, including mine, that doesn't have cellphone service. So I could...
Or streetlights.
Or streetlights. I could be, I could be traveling back and forth to Avery and back to Shea Branch, which I just did yesterday to go to the dump. And that wouldn't be tracking my, and I, I don't have my cellphone on, number one. I, I, does, does it require the cellphone to be on? Because I wouldn't have it on because there's no service. So I never went to the dump yesterday. Is that, is that where we end up on this?
To be honest, I am not an expert on that technology. My, my extreme apologies for not knowing the answers to those, those questions. I, I could, I don't even know where to begin to answer that question.
Thank you.
I think the reality is, is we're just trying to find data sources that are the closest to gathering the best data that we can find available. But is it going to capture everything perfectly? Likely not, as you've just noted, so.
I'm having a little trouble hearing, but I do have a question. Does, does this, does tracking these cellphones, does it just track when the cellphone makes a call or when it's just sitting there turned on?
I don't think it's tracking cellphone data like that. I, I mean, these are, you know, big data sources. So I think how they work with each other and the cellphone companies, they don't get individualized disaggregated, aggregated information. I think when they exchange information from cellphone companies and do these types of data dumps, they're, they're aggregating certain data. So I honestly, I don't think they're, at least the street light is not pulling that type of information and data from, from cellphones. I think the cellphone companies are sharing whatever is necessary for those companies to produce the data.
What is the data? If, if, if everybody turned off their cellphones and drove around for 30 days, is there going to be a no travel in, in Calaveras County? That, I mean, that's...
I don't think so, yeah. And, and we could reference, we could go to the street light website. I can look now. Street light is public. You can see what their methodology is.
And we've spoken with these, these modeling companies recently. And they develop models to target transportation in a region. And then they usually use the big data, which they refer to as cellphone data. And it's just your cellphone has a GIS, a GPS log in it that tracks your mileage. And they use mileage in big data sets to validate their model. So they're not using your data to come up with the actual number. They use a model and then they validate it with the big data to make sure that it's modeling generally correct. So at the end of the day, it's not even actual data. It's still a model that they use.
Okay, if I understand that right, then the data that goes into the model is not cellphone usage at all. It's something else. And my question is, what's the something else?
It's your GPS. Your, your phone has GPS in it. And so if, if your GPS is on, which it generally is all the time, it's noticing that, that a cellphone went by.
That doesn't account for people like my brother who don't carry one.
Exactly. But I think what they're saying here is they've developed models for different, for rural, suburban and urban areas. And then they use, they've figured out somewhere, way back somewhere, they have a formula that says this many cellphone pings translate to, to this much, this many transportation miles in this kind of an area. And all they're using those, that cellphone data for is to see if it kind of, if they're getting the kind of data that they would expect for an area like that. Is that what you're saying?
You're more articulate than I am, yes.
Okay, but still, does it, does it, does the cellphone data include data from cellphones that are on, but nobody's making a call?
Yes.
It probably includes it from cellphones that are off because the GPS is already always already...
But it, it's meaningless because the formula has that built into it. That's some number of cellphones will have their GPS tracking off. Some number of cellphones will be completely off. Some number of people don't have a cellphone at all. So it's really, they're just extrapolating and going, does this seem to match up? Okay, this seems close. And really, we have no idea how many miles are actually traveled exactly because no one's counting that.
Well, then the question is, you know, how, how reliable is this data? I haven't even got to the one-half allocation yet. But how reliable is this data? Because we're coming up with exact vehicle miles traveled. And what's our margin of error here? Is it within 10%? 50%?
I think all of this data is confusing because we see a very specific number, which sort of implies something was counted. But really, it's just the number that came out of the formula. And so it's really just an estimation for our purposes right now.
Yeah, but it's a number that, this arbitrary number is something that we are going to help to. It's a made-up number. We have no idea if we come close to that in the future in the 20-year...
Oh, because they're going to use the same formula to, to look at it again in five years. Except that they may have improved it by then, but you're right.
I have a problem with this whole thing because it's just all arbitrary numbers that there's no hard data. It's all based on models and models and...
Yeah, what we'd really like to know is...
They can be skewed. If it's a hard number, then I would have no problem saying, hey, we'll reduce it by 15%. We're good.
But, but there's no way to do that. It, I mean, it might be nice to know how many gallons of gas are sold in the county and then see if that goes down over time. But, you know, that, that involves getting that from private companies. I think this is just the best, the best model they have right now.
And to clarify too, we didn't take the VMT data from street light and just applied it to this. We used it, like I said, to validate the travel demand model. And the model is based off of trip rates, which is based off of employees and households in the county. And, you know, the model gets calibrated and validated based off of ground truthing. And not just from this VMT, but from track accounts that Caltrans and our local agencies do. And so there is a level of ground truthing that is done with these models. But then the models use, you know, rates and other methodologies to do forecasts for us. And, and there is another way, you know, you can track, they do like license plate surveys through the county, which when we do a comprehensive model update, you know, we try to use the most accurate ground truthing as possible to validate our models.
It's just there's so many components to it. And then you can check certain components and other components can't be checked as easily.
And there's a danger too that, you know, these models that were, were reported out in the, in this current inventory, those algorithms may be improved five years down the line. And oh, well, great, we can get a much better idea. And oh, wow, things have increased. I mean, unless we use the same fuzzy models in the future, how are we going to be comparing apples with apples?
Well, you, I think you have to compare the same imaginary numbers.
Right. And then you have, and you have your new one. And then you use that to be able to have a common area to start from each time.
Okay. I, I'm, I'm trying to read the attribution of one half. And my question was, how do we get there? Because, and there are other commissioners here who would know better than me, but it seems to me there's probably quite a bit of commuting from the west end of the valley, west end of the county into the valley and beyond, and then return trips. And there's probably quite a bit of recreational traffic that comes from the valley and beyond into the west end of the county to go to Pardee and Tulak and Hogan and New Maloney's. And I have no sense whether a one-half allocation is anywhere close. And I'm trying to figure out how you got there. It looks like it's another model.
I, I think it's probably an industry standard for the way they treat this kind of thing. And so, yeah, it doesn't represent any real number. It just represents a, a way to track it. And so if you do that in the future, you're going to have the same sort of thing going on. But we don't really, it's cert, and maybe it, it does work out as an average when you take everything in the county into consideration because all different parts of the county have all different situations.
Well, my question then is, is this model, it says the model allows us to separate out travel into four categories. And that's internal, internal and internal, external and external, internal and so forth. Okay, I probably didn't get all four. My question is, was this model created specific for Calaveras County? Or is it kind of an off-the-shelf model to get used no matter what county you're dealing with?
So the, the model that was used was the Calaveras County travel demand model we were just discussing. The 50% is a, is a standard because you don't want, every single county that does this, if they all took 100% of the trips generated in the county and produced in their county, well, then you're double counting, you know, your neighboring counties been including trips that started there and ended here and were including trips that started here and ended there. So it's just a way to not, try to not double count trips. But, you know, the alternative would be Calaveras County could take 100% of all the trips they generate and produce in the county. And that would be a lot more. So I think the 50% factor is just, you know, to distribute, to better distribute those trips on a standard basis. So it doesn't account for, you know, if you, you have households here and they generate certain number of trips and VMT. And it doesn't matter if that VMT is in Calaveras or outside of Calaveras. You generated and created that VMT or your residents did. But we're not accounting for external, external of people driving through the county, yes. That vehicle miles traveled was technically on our roads in the county, but it wasn't produced or generated within the county. So we do not account for those.
So it's a Calaveras-specific model, but the 50% attribution is used statewide or, and maybe even countrywide?
Yes.
Okay. Well, then it's really not Calaveras-based. That one half isn't Calaveras-based at all because it's, it's what's used statewide. It may not be accurate.
It, it's probably not.
Well, it's kind of...
But it's a, a way to estimate.
Over half of the VMTs are on this, these trips in and out of the county. And so, okay.
But other counties are doing the same thing. So it averages out when you look at it over the whole state.
But I don't think, why does that matter though, Michelle? Because we're, we're dealing with Calaveras County. I don't know that anybody's going to take what we do and then average into some statewide deal. We, we're, we're coming up with an inventory for this county against which we're going to have forecasts of what emissions are going to be in the future. And then we're going to have reduction things to try to meet targets and so forth. Just us. Doesn't matter what Sam McKean does.
But if everybody is using basically the same methodology, they might all be wrong, but they're all going to be, have the same sort of a bias for comparison purposes.
But if you, if you take a step back, you know, we are producing and generating those trips. So the alternative is to take 100% of those trips that you've produced and generated. And I think the reason you cut it in 50 again is because there's another end to those trips, right? And so 50% factor is just what everybody else uses to not double count. But you do have the option because 100% reflects what Calaveras is producing and generating.
I'll point out also that, you know, a lot of the numbers that we're generating are, are intended to provide scale, specific factors, so that we can emphasize the policies that will be developed as the next phase of this plan. And so some of these that we're calling out also are intended because there are only certain aspects of those trips that you have control over in your policy and your planning exercises. So we're just generating the data that will allow us to develop policies to help mitigate impacts from the numbers that are being generated. So you can't, you can't develop a policy that really regulates pass-through traffic, but you can develop policies to handle internal or traffic that's originating, excuse me, or ending within the county.
Okay, I'm ready to move on to agriculture.
I just have, I just have a quick question. I just have a quick question on these models. Do they take into account when they're paying the cell phones for the vehicle miles traveled, electric vehicles or hybrid vehicles, or, you know, the difference in vehicles? Because, you know, an 18-wheeler sure pollutes a lot more than a Toyota Prius. Does that take into account?
It is, yeah, I can take that on. So the California Air Resources Board comes out with different emissions factors and kind of vehicle breakdowns for each county. And so then emissions factors for specific vehicle types are applied to that VMT. So it reflects all the different vehicle types.
I think these models are just so complex because they're feeding in all sorts of different data that is then modifying the output number.
All right. But are they assuming there are the same number of Priuses in Calaveras County as there are in Alameda County?
They're looking at DMV records, I'm sure they're getting them. So it's, you know, we can't pick at everything because we're never going to finish because this whole process isn't set up for this level of scrutiny.
Yeah.
Yeah, but we're going to be.
But we're that kind of a.
No, but when the planning of policy is eventually in place of these numbers, it will have an effect on every player in the county.
And every city and county is doing it in just exactly the same way and probably having the same discussion, although we might be more troublesome than this.
Yes.
I know, it's very frustrating, but I don't think that these folks are in a position to do anything about it. So as long as we understand, all we can do is move forward doing the best we can. And I just think we could be here all day and not really change the outcome of what we need to come up with.
I think as long as the amended report is very clear that nobody was out there counting cars, and this is using models that are accepted in this area of expertise, and it's the best we can do right now, then that's fine. That's a lot better than just saying, there were so many vehicle miles traveled.
Let the record be struck that the planning commission is really disturbed, but we understand.
Yeah, yeah.
And I understand that, like you said, the model, I mean, not the model, the report does specify very specific numbers, though it can be misleading. So we will try to make it very clear, like, what are actual numbers that were reflected on the ground versus what was derived from models?
That would make a great big difference. Thank you.
Yeah, we did add that section already to describe which sectors and which data came from what sources. And then we'll add additional per this discussion from whatever you can give us, Amber, that details the VMT sources.
Great.
Okay, great. So the next section is on the forecasting growth in acres of farmland. I'm going to turn this over to Meredith.
Well, I think we just skipped ag.
No, it's growth in acres of farmland. Is that what you wanted to talk about?
No. No. We haven't covered the ag section. Oh, your herd numbers were developed, including the feedlot and dairy cattle and how the management.
Oh, right. You know what? We had divided up between SBC questions and Ringcon questions, so we'll, we'll add on the ag after. Sorry about that. We had drafted the document internally. We will get to it though.
No, but if they're, once they cover this, they'll get back to ag.
It's because of who's going to respond.
All right. So for the emissions forecasting section, the question about the acres of growth and acres of farmland, that was just taken from the Calaveras County Agricultural Production Reports. There are acres of farmland in those reports for each year from 1999 to 2019. So we took that and created a growth rate from that, and then that was applied to the forecast.
So the increase of 2.65% comes from the Calaveras County Ag Department?
It was taken from the ag reports, yes.
Okay. Do you know what crops were grown on these additional acres?
I do not have that information.
What's the basis for the conclusion that this growth in the acres of farmland is going to continue? Because, you know, we only have so much acreage in this county that's suitable for farming.
Right, yeah. And there's not an exact, an exact answer for that. Again, it's just kind of the best methodology that we have, that we use for the forecasting. Well, is that based off of, Meredith, the trend? Is that?
Oh, the trend was based off of.
That would continue?
Yes.
Well, did anybody talk to the county agriculture department to see if they thought such an increase would continue or not?
I did not. Yeah, I just took it from the ag reports.
That's all the question I have on that.
Apologies. But so for, in general, forecasting agricultural emissions is a challenging subject, just because agricultural production can be driven so heavily by external factors such as markets. So it's really difficult to find a metric to project in the future. So what was done here is it just, it took 20 years of previous data from the crop reports, and that was the best available data source that was available to try to make an estimate of how ag production will change in the future. That helps clarify it all.
Okay, let's move on.
So then there's a comment about the selection of 2010 Department of Finance population.
2018.
Okay, yeah, I was going to say, we didn't use 2010. We did use 2018 because that best aligns with the county's general plan and also meet county and CCOG staff preferences and also to meet CEQA requirements. So the use of the 2018 values are also explained in Appendix K of the original report, which kind of goes into all the forecast data and methodologies.
Well, but when we did the general plan, that was in the fall of 2019. The values we had were 2018 values. And now we were, projections, and now we have better, more recent projections. And, I mean, the county, I don't know why the county or CCJ staff has preferences on this. Where are those preferences coming from? If you had.
Also, so this is, this is why we did two different forecasts, was for, we also used 2021 Department of Finance population projections. So we used, because 2018 showed an increase in the population in the county as a projection, and the 2021 DLOF data showed a decrease. So we wanted to show both forecasts to show both scenarios, basically.
Okay.
And maybe the terminology preferences isn't right when we entered it there for this answer. What we meant was when we had a lot of discussions internally about this, folks who are on the ground in Calaveras County, so CCOG and county staff and city staff, all felt like those were not correct projections, that that is not the way things are trending, just like how the planning commission earlier had mentioned that the numbers in the wildfire report seemed not accurate, what's on the ground of what you see. So I think we just had a lot of discussions about it, and it just seemed like consistency with the 2019, with general plan, which used 2018 data. Also, it was pointed out that if you want to meet CEQA requirements, you, you, you know, you can't have population projections going down to zero. I will say also, we tweaked it because this was based on population projections, and we ended up using DMT projections, so that might change both values. I'm not sure if the question here is a preference to use 2021. I will say there was, you know, Department of Finance, again, has a model to do these projections. It's not hard science. It's not very specific. We even found errors in the tables that they gave us, and so we had to talk to them, and they fixed it to give us the correct one. So all this stuff, it's not going to be perfect, right? It's just the best that we can pull at the time of the data sources that we have available. And that is why we ended up using 2018 instead of 2021.
Well, I don't have a problem with showing both projections. I think that's fine. But I suppose down the road at some point, we're going to have to choose which one we're going to use.
We could see which one we're trending.
Okay, let's move on.
That's why we're torn, so much.
All right. And then, and then just the question about the, what legislature, legislative action was taken into account for the adjusted business as usual forecasts? So that's looking at renewable portfolio standards from the state, so SB 100, and then also California federal vehicle emission standard. And those are built into the California Air Resources Board's models, projections for future years through 2045.
So these are all legislative or administrative actions and rules that are in existence now?
Yes.
Not trying to predict what the legislature is going to do in the future?
Nope. This is all stuff that's already, already passed.
Okay, we can go into the GHG reduction target section. And I might lean on Ringcon a little bit to help because I know some of these quote-unquote requirements is tied into CEQA. So feel free to jump in and support me on this.
I'm just going to go ahead with these. I got responses for you on these. Got it?
Great.
So the question are the GHG reductions required? In a nutshell, yes. GHG targets are required pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act.
Excuse me for just a second here. Sometimes you're clearer than other times. Maybe if you could get closer to your microphone, the old men at the end of the table here are not, not hearing your consonants.
I will speak up. Is this better?
That's better.
So, yes, in a nutshell, reduction targets for GHGs are required pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act, which is short, in short, is CEQA. Specifically, CEQA Guidelines, Section 15183.5, that requires establishment of a level below which GHG emissions would not be cumulatively considerable. In other words, a GHG target, as one of the requirements of a GHG reduction plan in order for it to be considered a qualified plan and in order to be able to streamline future CEQA GHG analyses in the county. It's preparation of a GHG reduction plan with the established reduction targets by jurisdictions that is also recommended by the California Air Resources Board in order to show compliance with California Senate Bill 32, which requires jurisdictions to implement their fair share of GHG emissions reductions. Specifically, reducing emissions to at least 40% below 1990 levels by 2030. And the GHG reduction plan should also show progress towards meeting and being in compliance with California Executive Order B 5518, which requires statewide carbon neutrality by Furthermore, as part of CEQA analysis is required by that second GHG emissions question under CEQA Guidelines, Appendix G, its consistency with applicable plans to reduce GHG emissions, in this case, including SB 32 and Executive Order B 5518, that must be assessed. Any questions?
All right. Suppose, suppose the county decides that it's not going to have a reduction plan that meets CEQA requirements. Is it free to have a plan that does not meet CEQA requirements?
It can, but you will not be able to do any future CEQA streamlining.
Well, we could take the position that each project is going to have to do its own CEQA analysis. We're not going to seek to have a qualified CEQA plan that may or may not avoid that. And must they be binding? Yeah, maybe if you make them binding, but we don't have to have them in the first place, if I am understanding this right.
Yeah, so in terms of the binding question, so review under CEQA, including the corresponding public input process, is required for the adoption of any proposed project or plan, as you know, within the state. And since the county would like to adopt and implement their GHG reduction plan, CEQA review would still be required. And following CEQA certification or adoption, it's the GHG reduction plan and the targets as part of the overall GHG reduction plan would also be adopted. And at that point, thus binding, or at least as binding as any plan, policy, or ordinance that the county would normally adopt. So there is no known repercussion at this time for a jurisdiction not adhering to its own targets. But however, like I said, the future CEQA GHG analyses could not streamline from the GHG reduction plan programmatic CEQA document. And thus, there's a risk if the targets are not achieved, if there was future reliance on this plan and CEQA analysis.
Could you explain, as far as streamlining goes? If we adopt a plan that is consistent with CEQA, and we are in the process of carrying out that plan, when a project comes before us, how is the CEQA process going to be streamlined?
So as part of our scope of work, shortly after getting across the finish line with the certification of the programmatic CEQA document or the GHG reduction plan, we are lined up to help county staff prepare what we call a CEQA GHG Emissions Compliance Checklist, which is basically the same thing as a GHG reduction plan consistency checklist. And then that would be used by staff and shared with, to be used by applicants for future projects and plans, to fill out and to complete, to show exactly what aspects of the GHG reduction plan would be included as either part of the project or as mitigation, CEQA mitigation for that project or plan. And again, the streamlining, just to be super clear, is just for the GHG emissions analysis only for future CEQA, not for those other 20 topics. So it wouldn't obviously streamline biocultural transportation analyses, just the GHG emissions analysis. And when we say streamline, that's pretty much a fancy CEQA legal term for do a qualitative quicker review via checklist, as opposed to going down the route of doing a full technical modeling assessment and modeling again, if there are mitigation measures, to compare against, and to compare on some kind of quantitative assessment.
I'm encouraged by the fact that our chair is nodding her head as if she understands it. So she, she'll be able to explain it to us further, but thank you very much.
Commissioner Ladich, if I may, there's a guideline that talks about the requirements for how a plan can be used to streamline CEQA, and that is CEQA Guideline 15183.5. So that's 14 California. So that's 14 California Code of Regulations 15183.5. And I think, if I may, it's along the lines of developing thresholds of significance instead of having to do a full air quality analysis for each. I think the concept is analogous to what we kind of heard earlier.
This was the subject of, of your attachment to one of your recent emails?
Well, I sent a confidential memo that explains a little bit about, about the CEQA guideline and what would be required for a plan, a GHG reduction plan, to qualify as something that the county could use to streamline this one component of the initial study, which would be the cumulative effect of greenhouse gases on the project.
Okay.
It all comes back to, I think, that it will make it easier on our applicants to understand what will be required of them, and easier for us to assess whether or not they are meeting those requirements, and the whole idea that the less uncertainty that developers have, the more likely they are to move forward with their projects.
In Calaveras County.
It will also be very, much more cost-effective for applicants and staff as well, instead of doing a full study for every application.
Continue on.
Okay, let's see, the next question here. So, so SB 32 and that California Air Resources Board of Climate Change, statewide climate change scoping plan, deal with total gross emissions, and they sometimes say you can also deal with per capita gross emissions, but they do not, they do not deal with net emissions after the assumption of some potential carbon sequestration. So just to be clear on, on that approach. And then, is the county free to use a net emission standard? So, the county can proceed as they desire, however, under CEQA, using a net emission standard would result in a different and new GHG emissions analysis methodology compared to the current state methodology, and no other California jurisdictions are using net emission standards at this time.
Okay, I have a question on the one above. Says note, if I can read it, that the majority of natural lands within the county fall under federal, state, private land, et cetera jurisdictions, thus cannot be claimed by the county. What does that mean?
I think we just added that note because if we're reading this question correctly, I think it's one, we were wondering if it was merging the data from the wildfire assessment into a concept of net emissions, like the carbon stock from the forested land, but then we did want to note that, you know, technically, a lot of that land might be federal, state, private land, and so that's not necessarily, like, since no one's doing this net emissions, it, it would be also more nuanced, right? About what would actually be county-considered land versus what's federal carbon sequestration potential, or state or private land from state parks, et cetera. So, that was just a side note we added. If we're reading this question correctly, that it's, that it's in some ways combining the wildfire assessment results with the built environment GHG inventory, but they're two separate reports that are not comparable or additive in that way.
Well, I understand the wildfire assessment does not give us a number for carbon sequestration for 2018 or any other year, but it does tell us that there's like 74 million metric tons of CO2 that's sequestered in this county, and it had to get there somewhere, somehow. And I think it's because soil and biomass is absorbing CO2, and we have a lot of soil and biomass in this county, unlike Los Angeles, for example. Now, I understand you don't have an inventory to measure that now, but can you do it? And are we a net contributor to greenhouse gases, we being the county and all the land in it? Or are we a net adder to greenhouse gases? That's the question. Because seems to me what counts for greenhouse gas problems is what's winding up in the air, including what got taken out of the air by the resources in this county.
Instead of standardized process for carbon sequestration yet, or even for accounting for it in GHG inventories, the GHG inventories just account for the built environment. So, in, you know, in the, in that definition, we are a net, we are an emitter. It's not about net, because we're not accounting for carbon sequestration. If I understood correctly, Kelsey, so please correct me if I'm wrong here, the wildfire assessment report does not calculate carbon sequestration, so the 74 million metric tons of carbon dioxide equivalent was for carbon stock inventory, but that's not the same value?
I understand that. I'm trying to get to how much CO2 carbon is sequestered each year, let's take 2018, in the county, because you have a number of like 368 metric tons emitted, what gets taken out?
I don't think, go ahead, Eric.
Yeah, sorry, Sherri. So what we've established is the baseline of the carbon stock that's been sequestered in the county and is existing, and then we would have to do another calculation, hasn't been part of this couple of work, to estimate what the annual increase in carbon stock would be. And that would be following a different type of methodology, using additional models developed by the state of California and Department of Conservation. That can be done, and that can be, and that can be included at some other, it's some other couple of work at some other time, but yeah, you could do that if you needed to, it's just not part of this couple of work today.
I think it should, I think it should be done. I think it should be done, because that 74 million metric tons had to get there sometime, and there has to be a number per year that, that's getting pulled out of the air, and I would like to know what it is.
There's a program called TERRA Count that was developed by the Department of Conservation. The county Merced recently did one, Santa Barbara County's doing one now, and Conquista County just started this newer program, but it is being completed by regional, regional agencies and counties to start to estimate what that sequestration potential is, and then to estimate the value of different measures that will increase sequestration, and provide an estimate of what those measures could possibly do.
Would that be specific to this county? Because you do have in the wildfire assessment, a breakdown of the different categories of foliage and trees and grass and shrubs and so forth in this county.
It would be specific to the county based off of the baseline data that was initially generated as part of the wildfire analysis.
I think that answers that. It can be done, and I would suggest it should be done.
But even if we did that, and I, this question may not make any sense, in this inventory, are we inventorying, as of 2018, what GHG was in the air that was sourced in Calaveras County? Is that, is that what this inventory is?
Yes, from the built environment. And then there is a separate report tied into this whole project, which is the wildfire assessment.
Well, I don't, Sherri, I think the question, what's in the air, you know, I mean, there's definitely pollutants in our air from the valley and whatnot. This inventory is looking at what we're producing, you know, here in the county. So what was produced here? Not necessarily, you know, measuring particular matter or what was actually in the air.
Right, but, and the sequestration doesn't, I mean, it enters into that just in the fact that it's, sequestration is happening, and, but we're not going to be looking in the future to what sequestration does? Or is it just that we're looking at what's in the air that's been generated from Calaveras County, and that's what we're aiming to reduce?
That is what we're looking at now. It's not to say that they aren't changing, and Rincon, maybe you know this better than I do, whether, I think CARB is starting to consider sequestration, so that might come down in the future in the pipeline in coming years, how they account for that, but right now, these inventories just account for the built environment.
I, I'm sorry, I couldn't understand what your adjective is before environment. Sounds like felt, but.
Built, built meaning like man-made. What is man-produced, you know, from our buildings, from our transportation, waste, all that.
Thank you.
That's how building people talk, the built environment. We like that term.
It just seems to me that, that number, a good number to have, because what happens here is, in this county is, people have to use vehicles, because we're spread out, we're a rural county. Mass transit doesn't work for us, carpooling doesn't work for us, we're going to have to drive, we're going to have to heat our homes and our businesses. And the fact that we are a rural county, and people are spread out and have to travel, also carries with it the fact that there is a lot of open space that is pulling carbon out of the air. And I don't think that a one-size-fits-all model that may be good for LA or San Francisco fits here, because you have to take account, as I said, what counts to me is what's winding up at the end of the year in the atmosphere out of this county.
And, and ultimately, our plan could conceivably include both reducing our emissions and sequestering more of whatever we have, but right now, we're just trying to get this baseline. So I think that, that would be interesting to know in the future, so that we could make use of it. We, we're going to lose our consultants here in just 15 minutes or so, and so we need to get to the finish line, right? And I know you're concerned about agriculture, so should we move on to that?
A question, I know you had, there was one other CEQA question from county legal counsel. Do you want me to address that right now, or do you want to do ag real quick and then come back to that after?
Either one is fine.
Okay, actually, Andrew, why don't you do the ag, and then I can, I can go back to that legal question after you're done with the ag, if you don't mind.
Sure, thanks, Kelsey. All right, so we're going back to agricultural inventory. Both these questions are a little bit related in a way, you know, looking at how these numbers are developed, talking about our methodology that was used for agricultural inventory. Really, for both of these items, they're really related to the number of livestock that are in the county. We originally attempted to get data from the county ag commissioner, we were provided the county crop reports, but they really just didn't have the refined type of data that we're looking for. They didn't seem to have accurate head counts of all the specific livestock types that we would like to look at in order to do this type of emissions assessment. So in order to get that data, we went to the United States Department of Agriculture, National Assessment, or National Agricultural Statistics Service, and they do a census every five years, I believe. So we use the data from their 2017 census to get the herd numbers, the overall herd numbers for the different livestock categories. However, in order to estimate the greenhouse gas emissions from this livestock, we need to know a little bit more about what their conditions are, such as, you know, the types of operations, feedlot, or dairy, or, you know, pasture. And that also relates to, similarly, it's from different manure management systems. You know, we're looking at both those different items there. So we weren't able to get refined data about the actual conditions in Calaveras County related to this. So what we ended up doing is looking towards the state's methodology, California Air Resources Board's methodology for their greenhouse gas inventory, which they produce every year. And they have numbers about all the different livestock living conditions and manure management types with, throughout the state. And really, so we, since we didn't have the Calaveras County specific data, we ended up using the averages throughout the state and using their methodology to calculate the greenhouse gas emissions. And I think that kind of covers both of those questions in one go to our response, but you have additional questions.
Are you just working from the number of acres that are used for grazing animals? Or are you assuming that there are feedlots and dairies in Calaveras County?
Right, so, again, like I said, we didn't have that specific type of data. We really just had anecdotal data, which really isn't enough for us to specifically, you know, put a number on paper. But yes, we use the number, the proportion, or the number of livestock in each of those conditions, such as feedlots in the state, and use that proportion and apply that to the total number in Calaveras County from the USDA NASAS census data.
Does the USDA data, does the USDA go out and actually count cattle, like a census?
Yes, they do a census, correct.
Okay, that's interesting.
It's some of it surveyed, but I believe a lot of it's surveyed, but it is.
Okay, how many feedlots were there?
In Calaveras County? In, it, it didn't say in the census, it only provided total number of cattle in the census.
Okay.
So I think what you're getting at is that there may not be feedlots in Calaveras County.
And if I understand this right, the same methodology that came up with the feedlots and the dairies in the county came up with the other classes of cattle, including cows and heifers and so forth?
Yes, or.
All right.
Cows and heifers.
Now, the problem I'm, the problem I'm having is, I've been a livestock business county for a long time, and I checked with the county agricultural commissioner. I have never, know of no feedlot and no dairy in this county, and neither does the county agricultural commissioner. Now, I guess that's what you get when you take statewide numbers and then scale them down, but it's not accurate. We can't measure progress from a non-existent feedlot to another non-existent feedlot. So all I can tell you is these numbers are just wrong, unless another commissioner or somebody else out here can say that, oh, there's a feedlot here or dairy there, because I don't think so.
Well, but is it possible for us to re-characterize that, well, we don't know where the number of cattle even came from, but it, it seems like that is something we could get.
Well, and the problem isn't just the feedlots and the dairies, because when you get to manure management, most of that comes out of feedlots and dairies, and there aren't any. And now we're being told we have all these emissions from non-existent feedlot and dairies, and the manure problems that go along with them, and they don't exist in this county.
And we'll be able to fix it overnight, when we eliminate all the feedlots and dairies, when we add one of them, and now we don't have any.
That's exactly what you have to do.
If there's an actual census, it must be broken down by state, and it must be broken down by county. So USDA does a census of the number of cattle? Don't they have a figure for Calaveras County?
Yes, they, so they do, and they do provide that level of detail by county. However, they are not providing the conditions where the power being raised, and so that is where we went towards the state numbers. And yes, I understand what you're saying, that there isn't any feedlots in Calaveras County, and, you know, so we were just working with the best available data that we have, and if it's possible to get the more refined data and get, you know, hard numbers about the actual conditions for livestock, it would be possible to get the estimate, however, that would. However, that would require additional time and labor.
But if USDA, I'm taking, when you say they do a census, that means somebody's counting cattle. And if they count cattle in Calaveras County, it doesn't, right now, it doesn't matter whether it's a feedlot or not. What's the number of cattle in Calaveras County as of 2018? What does their census show us?
You know, we...
All right, do you?
I'm fairly sure they have never counted my cattle. I think I would know it if they did.
They may not go out and directly count, but I believe they do it off of a survey basis.
Okay. So they're probably assuming there are feedlots and dairies in every county in the state of California, and that's a concentration of cattle. And so by the square mileage in Calaveras County, there are probably this many cattle, which is assuming there are feedlots and dairies. Is that a fair assumption?
Yes.
Which leads us to Commissioner Rooster's remark that it's wrong. But it's the best you have.
Correct. It's possible that it is not totally accurate, but it does give us...
Totally inaccurate. Now, you're sounding like the government employees.
I have to be somewhat diplomatic.
This is a relatively easy one. They can take the number of cattle and say, those are the number of cattle, and eliminate, and say, all of them are grazing, you know, on pasture, right? That there is no feedlot and there is no dairy.
But I think their assumption is, in reaching the number of cattle...
I understand that, but we can correct that. That is a correctable thing.
We can partially correct.
Right.
We can correct it by not listing any feedlots and not listing any dairies and adjusting the manure issues accordingly.
Right.
But the problem remains, what's the handle on the total number of cattle? And I'm not convinced that's right.
Yeah.
It probably isn't perfect, but it may be a more reasonable thing. It's not, we know there's not zero cattle.
The way I was restating the question, though, there is, would be assuming there are feedlots and dairies, which have concentrations of cattle. So in so many square miles, you're going to have so many cattle, which include these concentrations, so it's going to overestimate the number of cattle in Calaveras County. Because we don't have the feedlots, they're sparsely grazing. I'm done.
Well, I think, I think the best you could do is, as we discussed, you get rid of the feedlots and the cattle, adjust the dairy, the manure emissions issues accordingly. For the total, for what's left, which is beef cows, calves, and stockers, I don't even know that you can make that breakdown. Because I don't know that the stockers numbers are any more reliable than the feedlot, the dairy numbers. For the total number of cattle, all you can do is say, here's our best guess, and here's the limitations on what this estimate is. And it is only an estimate, and here's where, here's how we got it.
Exactly.
Which is what they're doing, but they're using these figures that turn out to be wrong.
I do want to note that maybe in the future, the data and the models will be more accurate, or that we could add something which removes the feedlots and dairy, in which case, when you reinventory, it'll work in your favor, because these numbers that you magically will have not be accounting for in your, in achieving your targets. So I don't know if it's something that we need to worry too much about triggering that, because I also don't know how we would do that, Andrew, unless I'm missing something here. It just sounds like this is the best available system we have right now. We don't have a better way until that's developed in the future, right?
Well, I think when you look at developing your reduction plan, you need to take these into account. Obviously, you're not going to put elements in the reduction plan to reduce dairy lots, because you don't have any.
And if it helps, we could add another footnote here that clarifies that even though the model takes that into account, there are no feedlots and dairy cattle in Calaveras.
That'd be good.
That would be good.
Were there any other questions? I think those are all the written ones that we have received.
I think that there was a question, a legal question that you wanted to address.
Yeah, I can repeat it here if you don't see it on the list here on the screen.
Or why don't you repeat while I had cotton paste?
I'll just, so what I have here is that county legal counsel has asked if, in reading Sequel Section 15183.5, if those regulations are saying that an EIR must be the sequel document that's completed for a GSC reduction plan in order for it to be programmatic.
We can't, we can't see the screen. Okay, there it is.
I can clarify, this was a question I asked, and I've since discovered that an EIR is not necessarily required. So I don't, if you have a question, great, but I don't have a question about this anymore.
Yeah.
Or EIR or other environmental document.
Yeah, apologies. Julie had sent that, I sent that, so we had resolved that.
Okay, because I was going to say, yeah, there's numerous other examples for many things, like general plan, safety elements, and other GSC reduction plans, and many other programmatic ISMVs throughout the state. So yeah, the short answer is, you don't need to have to do an EIR for it to be a programmatic document. If you guys are, don't have a longer response, but if you guys are feeling like you're good, then we can put a pin in it. I think we...
We have two commissioners that haven't asked any questions, and there are two minutes left. Is there any chance you have more time available this afternoon?
Actually, the majority of mine were touched upon throughout, and I threw in my three cents throughout, so...
Commissioner Park, do you want to just throw something in the mix?
Oh, my gosh. You know, the thing that I have a problem with the inaccuracy of this is that on the news every day, I see how we're dying and we're not going to be here, and you even said in 40 years. And I just say...
Forty, I said forty.
Forty, yeah, forty years, exactly. I understand that, but my point is that it's so overblown and that we're going to have stifling, more stifling regulations moving forward on our building and development and things like that. And I think because of that, it needs to be more accurate. Because if it's overblown and people are in fear, because I see on TV that everybody's in fear these days over this global warming, which I'm sure that the world's warming, I mean, we can see that it is. But if it's overblown, that is where I have a problem. Because it just adds more regulation and more fees to, you know, developing your communities. That's my big problem.
That's a whole different issue than what we need to do in order for us to be able to prove...
But I think it needs to be accurate, that's all. It needs to be as accurate as you can get it, because it's going to become the standard that we have to live by. That's my rub, so...
Here's an easy question. Can we get your green answers in an email so that we can print them out? The things you have inserted saying, oh, yes, we're doing this.
Yes, we can send you that. I think we've already sent a copy to Tim and Gina and Amber. I don't think we have Ring Con's answers, so we can...
I'm sorry, I just, I thought I was seeing green in some of your answers.
They're like, all right.
Yes.
Would you like us to share? We can create a summary of what exactly has been changed in the report.
Great.
And what pages and what exactly has been changed. We can provide a summary of that.
And we highlighted it in the reports so that it's very easy to see the changes that we added.
Yeah, but there's also the answers to the questions that you actually have shown us today, that some go beyond what you put in the report. It'd just be nice for us to, in order to make sure we made all the proper notes while you were speaking, for us to know what was on the screen.
Yes, we can send you this document.
Great.
So what is our next step? Are we going to see a revised document that then we will say, yes, this, this works? Or does, this is informational only, so we're not taking any action?
Oh, go, Gina, sorry, I can't see Gina's face.
No, no, go ahead.
Yeah, and I think we talked about all the changes that we've agreed to make, and so if the commission is comfortable with those changes, and those changes will satisfy, you know, some of the, you know, concerns that you had, and you're comfortable moving forward, then we'll make the revisions report, and we will submit it to the board's supervisors. Unless you feel like it needs to come back to the commission, then we probably won't be here, and we'll just resubmit the report to you for just informational.
I think if we could see the report as amended, then we have an idea of what we think of it.
I don't think that it has to wait on us another meeting, though.
Yeah, that's my question is, do you just want to see it? Or do you want to see it and come back and have further discussion? Or do you feel comfortable with it after today's discussion that the group can send it forward to the board of supervisors?
I don't, I don't know that we need to take up more of the consultant's time.
Okay.
But I think maybe it should be on our agenda that we have looked at it and we're passing it on to the board, if that's what we're doing.
What is the timeframe we're getting it to?
I want to look at it again and probably have a meeting to discuss it before it goes to the board. Because, you know, another thing that came out at the first meeting was, a lot of these estimates are based on assumptions. And those assumptions were brought out by me at the last meeting, and, but they're not stated in the report that they are the assumptions, and it's not stated in the report what, if anything, verifies them. And it's not stated in the report, and this is particularly true with the energy, non-utility materials. How accurate is this stuff? And it should be.
That's why I think we need to, we need to see...
Need to see it.
Need to see it and have a chance to, thumbs up or thumbs down.
So, yeah, so what is the...
So, understanding we obviously don't have any more meetings or time in November anyway, the next meeting is December 9th, which means any materials that we need to submit to you have to be ready to go by the 19th, which is next Friday. I don't know how far along the document is in relation to, you know, hitting, hitting the press, so...
We can probably make the 19th. We've already made all the changes. I think in this meeting today, we just talked about adding a couple more footnotes.
Okay.
Even if it said, we're in the process of refining, you know, our notes here to explain this, we know it's being addressed.
Okay.
Well, okay, is the 19th going to be a long enough time to come up with the net emission scenario that they have a model for?
The what?
The net emissions, taking into account carbon sequestration.
No, they're not going to do that as part of this.
No, that's a separate project that would create a new scope of work and budget.
So that's not going to be part of the inventory?
No.
That is not...
It better be part of the inventory, is all I can say.
Extremely large scope of work.
It's just not part of what they're doing.
They're saying that it's not within their scope of work and that taking, taking that next step is going to require a budget change, which means more money.
So just to add a little information about this, COG has a grant, which is being used to help both COG and the county. So if, I mean, the planning commission, the board of supervisors would have to agree to take on the cost of any additional work that the planning commission recommends. So it would require board of supervisors authorization to make that modification and develop a customized plan for Calaveras County.
So, and I think that would be interesting information to have in the long run for our long-term goals, but I don't think it's necessary for what we're doing right now.
In the inventory.
Yeah.
Well, I would say it's part of the inventory, actually, but if it's going to take a board action to authorize it, so that's the way it is.
Right, and it's not part of the built environment portion, so, which is what they're focusing on right now, emissions.
It may, that may be true, but it is still inventory.
I do want to commend the consultants for their, their hard work, and they're dealing with people that are stuck here on the ground, trying to make sense of what we see. And you're stuck trying to make sense of what all you have and the way of your data to come up with some figures. We sympathize with your work, and we criticize the accuracy of the numbers that your models might give, but that's not a criticism of you. Thank you very much for what you're doing.
Thanks.
So I think that what we're saying is they're going to get you something by the 19th, and we are going to be having a meeting on December 9th.
December 9th.
To take one last look at this and then hopefully get it on to the board of supervisors so they can move on to the next stage of the project, which is actually developing the plan.
And just to clarify also, this will come to the board as an informational item as well, if they don't take action on it, because then they have to do Sequel before it actually, if they were taking a county action. So this is just developing the baseline, the plan. They will have to take formal action on that would come to the planning commission again first.
I did have another point, it was it, and it's having to do with the off-road emissions. They include emissions for off-road industrial, oil drilling, portable equipment, transportation, refrigeration. And I think that falls in the same category of feedlots and dairies. We don't have it.
Yes, we did correct that line. We just took it from the general model as their description of what may be included in there, but since you clarified that oil drilling and I think mining were not applicable to Calaveras County, that was another update that we did make in the, in the final report.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Again, we won't see you again next month. So enjoy the holidays.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night.
Do we want to vote on the continuation?
There's no vote.
It's just informational.
It's informational.
No, she said on the continuation.
Oh, on the continuation. Yeah, so I guess it is continuation. So yes, do I have a motion to continue this informational item to December 9th?
I so move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Next time, it's yours.
Thank you for the reminder, and we thought it was just an ongoing thing, we're going to do it forever.
Forever. They're still fine.
It's so much fun.
The mission reports.
I would just like to thank anybody that served in the armed forces for the Veterans Day.
Absolutely.
And anybody that is serving now, and family members, and happy Thanksgiving.
Yes.
Absolutely.
Yes, we will not, we will not see each other again before the Thanksgiving holiday. Go out and get your inexpensive turkey now before they get too expensive and maybe not found at all.
Or emissions.
Any other reports? How about our planning director?
I have no report this afternoon. Let you all off the hook.
We are adjourned at whatever. We are adjourned at whatever it is, 3:12 or so. Thank you, everybody.
I'm counting on you.